It's a nice phone ringing, yeah? What's the meeting order? Uh, the May 20th, 2025 Weston County Courthouse Commission. Start county business after a communication of anybody who care to give one?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful moisture that you help bless us with. We ask that you continue to be with us and bless our county. Be with us today as we make difficult decisions for the county and the people in it. Thank you, Father, for everything you do for us in Jesus' name and amen.
Uh, what?
I believe in the flag of the United States of America and in the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Positions and changes to the agenda, I wanted to add one to the rest of the, is everything coming on? So I'd like to put a 10-minute spot or so in under whole business. The Alexis, the newsletter journal, sent out a questionnaire and I couldn't answer it this weekend because I didn't have the paperwork in front of me, but there's six questions that they were wanting to, some info on of our investments that we have. So I think that would be appropriate that we just do it and then Suzie can respond or...
I need to add, um, the weed and pests have one more board member that needed appointed, but they forgot to give it to us for the last meeting. So if we could also add that under, maybe just after our own business.
Move to approve with, uh, two.
Motion proper to second on the floor to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, I'm sorry, is any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah. All right, public comment? Any public comment? No. Minutes, May 6th, 2025. Yes, Mr. Green.
Uh, I think you caught the one of the conflict of issue.
Bless you.
Thank you. Couldn't miss that. Then, under Commissioner Irman, move to authorize the chairman's signature. I think we need to put that the motion failed.
Which one?
Uh, one, two, three, four, five, five paragraphs now. Credit card preauthorization? Oh, it's on the third page. Go ahead and read the whole thing. See what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm. Failed. Got it.
That's all I have.
Anything else? There can a motion to approve the minutes of May 6th, 2025, not a meeting as amended.
Still moved?
Proper.
Say it.
Second motion. Any discussion? Those in favor? Martin? I think. Martin?
You can put Edward.
Do it louder.
I wasn't sure. I thought they both did, but I was like, I want that.
All those in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah. Executive session minutes. Here, let's stand with it.
Dear gracious, what is this? This is one of the rice woman. Cowboy State Day. Cassie Craven.
She does what?
She writes for Cowboy State Day.
Oh, really? I was wondering. I heard the name. That public defendant, part-time public defendant. Is that all-state paid?
Public defendant.
So that's what's coming out of this account that we're having to do the budget adjustment for.
We probably could defend the estate for state law.
Court appointed attorney. Public defendants are basically court-appointed attorneys.
Yep, that's all us.
So how do they allocate it? I mean, if it's a, if it's in Weston County, that's your share of their wages?
Mm-hmm. Their wages come out of whatever county they've worked in. Do you need to move my son?
Move to approve the executive session minutes of May 6th, 2025 times two.
Second?
Got a motion to approve the executive session minutes of May 6th, 2025 times two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nice. Sorry, I don't like this pen.
Hand down a five 24-hour permits for King B in line B for, um, different events that they're planning on having between June 7th and towards the end of July.
Do you want me to have her lock on? Think the treasure is? Hey Karen, can you hear us?
I can hear, I think I can hear you better.
Suzie Olbermann, would you wave if you can hear us?
Oh Karen, she said I can hear you.
That's technology.
Almost like on the express, smoke signal.
Tick can in the string.
Yeah.
Pull it tighter, better get, better clear the case at the string state.
Make a motion to approve the chairman's signature on the five 24-hour ceding permits for the King B Inn in the month of June and July.
Motion for chairman's signatures, are second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? She right here, Paul. Sorry, need to sign. Sorry.
Okay, this first resolution that we're doing, um, the $165.60 for the youth services full-time supervisor. For some reason, when they budgeted in her account, they were eight hours short. And I feel that it was because, um, from the time Deb retired and, um, the new gal took over. When she first took over, when Jody first took over, she was working part-time for the attorney's office and part-time for the sheriff's office. So there was never a whole year that she was on the new pay scale. So, um, they just went with the same amount that was in there before. So they're just short $165.60, so that's the first one. The second one, um, Ricky is short again in that account. And so she went through and did an average of April, March, and February for her, um, attorney. So she's in the hole, $2,243.40, and then an estimate for May and June for $8,000. However, she did bring me, we think that's enough that's gonna get her through, but now she has just found out that, um, the county is responsible to pay trial transcripts for indigent prisoner upon appeal. So she has gotten two invoices for that that she wasn't counting on, and it's about $3,000. So she did bring me the state statute on that to show you guys. So hopefully that $18,243 will be enough, but we will watch that and, um... Then, the final one, when the airport came in and asked for $850 from the county and $850 from the city, um, the motion from the board was for $850. It should have been for the whole amount that they were requesting because the county pays it and then gets reimbursement from the city. So this $850 into the airport repair maintenance is for the $850 for the city's portion of the money. And that was brought to my attention right now.
Mr. Chairman? So as the District Special Attorney, are we gonna be changing that from 18? Do you think that'll be enough? 18 plus the three?
She thinks it is because she cushioned her age.
Plus the three?
Yeah.
I mean, I was listening, but I wasn't.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I was reading the budget, which is... Just gonna say the people are complaining, they're welcome to come in. Oh, I see outside. This is exciting stuff.
Like he did.
Mr. Green.
Do we know if the city approved that?
Yes, they did.
Okay. And then that money will go back into this original account then?
It'll go into their repair maintenance. And then Suzie always sends bills to the city for their house.
Morning.
More interesting to look back at here to see what the story is. Mr. Green, you're top tonight.
The district attorney piece?
Yeah, like the court appointed it. I mean, how much higher are we? Granted, we had a couple of big cases this year, we haven't had the best.
It would be very interesting because when I looked up... I don't know who wrote this, these notes, but they should be fired. It's actually down for them. It's down. But still be interesting to go look.
You see, like, that is wrong.
I was going to go with one, you know, we had a hundred thousand in the whole budget. And then the one year, it was 20,000 less, so we cut it down to 80,000, but no.
They even got cut more than that, huh? Nice discussion to have.
Pleasure of the board, I guess.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-10, minutes of the budget.
Motion on the floor to approve Resolution 2510, are second?
Second.
Proper second discussion.
I'm recusing myself from the vote.
Okay. Would you like to do separate here?
Um, yeah, if I want to separate, I'm gonna be fine.
I have to go.
It's all on one.
I know.
Oh, it is, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, the only, um, comment I have on this is, is this has to be a, a serious look-through of what to put in that account and have that conversation. And especially when we have the district court judge coming. How and where and why? This is, this is incredible money that just keeps getting put in that account. Perhaps, but it could go, um, I don't know. I just think we have to have quite a conversation because this is... That's my opinion.
I got a question, is there, is there any way to monitor the spending although it's statutorily supported? I mean, that's, I hate to see the, I hate to see it hiding behind the statute and that's kind of the dumping.
One thing I guess you would know potentially is, in some of these circumstances, I mean, how long was this case out to? One of those cases is out of two years, right?
Yeah, it was almost out. Four, five, wasn't it? Long time.
It might have been two or four, yeah. So, I mean, you know that something's gonna come down the pike eventually on that, but I don't know. It's just terribly difficult to...
Well, Mr. Chairman, um, I guess what probably the conversation should be is we'll put money in there, but we have this, um, this policy that you can, that you can run the lines if you don't have enough in this one. There has to be some kind of, um, statement made that that's not one of them. You can't pull from that. Um, and that way it could roll over, but we could go into a point where we can put them, keep enough money in there as, as a, as an average of what we've had, but give that department the understanding, that one stays there. We're not gonna go by whatever if we run out. Come to this board and we'll discuss it, but, um, this is, this is hard to plan.
Yeah.
Um, and so if we go to a point where we have a, a three-year average or whatever that we could come up with and, and put those stipulations on there, I think we feel better.
This is the third amendment, we've had, budget amendment, we've got for the same thing.
And since I've been here.
Yeah. So, yeah. Figure out how to get an angle on it. Yeah, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the board's signature on Resolution 2510, 2025-10 amendment to the 2425 budget?
Aye.
Opposed? As for the future, I mean, I know it's easier for you to create one, but would you prefer, Garrett, if you know that there's gonna be a potential conflict, like if Beck can seize that to separate it into two?
I mean, it would be nice.
Yeah.
The other, I would like to be a part of this, but, but it's a little more complicated too.
Yeah. Because it, it could certainly be a part of something, but... Ms. Green?
Hello.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. What you got?
Okay, um, I think we should start with, we have a transfer from, I'll do that. The Pizza Barn, Pam Golteary, to the new applicant, Pizza Barn LLC. Um, I don't know if you want to go through this, look at this transfer application. Um, I have been in contact with state on a lot of it. Um, their lawyer, her lawyer, um, they have not marked one thing on here. Um, and I tried, I keep trying to get a hold of a lawyer, I tried again this morning. It's as simple, if they just tell me which one it's the, if they want. To sell just package off premises, you know, to take off premises, or to just sell on premises, or to do both. Um, so it's the only thing that they don't have marked here.
Isn't that kind of important to have one?
Yeah, it is. We have to know. We have to know, so...
Who do you, yeah, who do we need to, uh, do you want info from our attorney on it? Is that what you're asking?
Oh, no, uh, the, um, his, either Sandra Martin or the lawyer. Because the lawyer has been the one that's been contacting me about it. Um, Sandra Martin has been in a couple of times. So either one will fill me in on what they want.
Does the license itself support either Martin?
Yes.
Okay.
It is a retail liquor license. And then there's three options that they have to choose underneath which, how they wanna sell it. And most of the time they forget and don't fill it in, and I usually catch it. And I didn't catch it when she was still here. And so then right away I went to the lawyer and I said, she didn't fill this in, what do you want? I can just mark it, whatever you guys are wanting. I never heard back from him to no. So I have not been able, it is one thing that state has sent back saying they need filled out. And yes, of course, I know that, but I haven't gotten an answer. Um, there was many things about this that I was told at one point wasn't good enough from one guy at state, but then, because there's like three of them that handle all of this. And then from another guy, I was told it was okay, so... I don't know. Um, that's why I brought everything to you guys. Um, one thing that is required is a financial, um, a financial condition, financial stability. I didn't know exactly what they wanted. They had like a generic filled-out thing that they could submit. Um, they did say it was up to you guys to decide if that was good enough or not. So I did bring what they submitted for that. Um, basically, state said that you guys probably wanna make sure that you're accepting a business that is financially stable here, I guess. So I don't know if you wanna look through those two forms or the whole thing. It is, the property was sold as a contract for deed, so it's not a sell of the business yet. So Pam did have to write the lease agreement for, I think it's supposed to be for two years. So they, they don't own it yet, and that is marked on this application, that it is a lease. And I do finally have that lease agreement. Um, that says, you know, they have to tell which page that they say it's okay to sell alcohol on the premises and stuff like that. And that is signed, and we did have them notarize it because they did bring it in once not notarized. And we're like, mm, probably should get that notarized. So sellers and, um, Sandra did sign off on it for D Antlers and Pizza Barn LLC. Um, I don't have anything other than a notice, because one of the things was Jason at state didn't like that we didn't have anything saying Sandra could sign off for these businesses. So this was submitted from a Capil Persaud with Pie Bar LLC. I don't, like I said, I had all these questions for state. At one point, this, one guy said, this doesn't look right for me, but then the last guy I talked to didn't have a problem with it. But this is, so like the last page of the applicant, renewal applications and the transfers, if they're in LLC, they have to fill out the LLCs. But Jason had said, and it does say, each officer, director of an LLC member must complete all of the information below. So they didn't have that, they just had LLC listed. No directors or personal people. So Jason told me... So Jason told me, well, you have to list the people. Well, then the guy came back and said, this was okay, just having Sandra listed. So. That's the back, the last page of the transfer. It's the same as the renewals. We always have to have people sign off on it that are applying for the liquor license or the renewal or transfer or whatever. The applicant is Pizza Barn LLC, doing business as Pizza Barn.
But somehow Pie Barn and Mr. Barnes, Six and Six are tied in for that?
And, yeah. This is a letter from the purchaser's attorney that came with all the application stuff.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Cano. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Purchaser's attorney that came with all of the application stuff. I have emailed him. I said, we do have to have the renewal filled out for the new year starting July, or yeah, July 1st after this transfer and not her back from it. So I still don't have the renewal for July 1st.
Mr. Chairman, there's way too much confusion here. I, I'm not comfortable with the confusion.
It is very confusing.
Cut and dried is for me because when it comes, ends up coming back to us, State lost cut and dried. We don't get to interpret anything. So I'm, I'm uncomfortable with this. I do have another question for you. Do they have a full liquor license?
A what?
Do they have a full liquor license?
Well, it's Pam's liquor license that's being transferred.
Is it a full one?
It's a retail liquor license.
So they can take off sale?
Yes. There's the three options. Because she used to be the restaurant. Then we transferred her to the retail, which gave the three options you had to choose from. Either on premises, off premises, or both.
Okay, so I missed that part somewhere along in the absence of, of, of she going to retail.
Okay, yep, that's all our retail options.
I didn't understand the two, take liquor off.
There's got something.
Oh, sorry. I agree with Commissioner Ertman. I'm not sure that Pam would want to transfer her liquor license when they don't own it. I'm, I'm real confused about that. I mean, they're essentially renting for this time being. Leasing is renting, so they're renting the space. So do they, should they have the liquor license or should it stand in Golteary's name until they own the, but they don't own the business? This is weird.
So that is a Pam, whether she wants to.
Because they could say, we're not getting it back from this step.
Right, and, but I think they made a lease agreement. And I did suggest that Pam, because they suggest from State, that it is contingent upon the sale. So hopefully she put that in her agreement.
So if it's contingent upon the sale, then it shouldn't.
Well, no, that's what, there's a spot that says lease. That's why they have to have the lease agreement. It's not an own.
That, that liquor license is attached to that address.
The building itself, yes.
If, if somebody defaults on it or tries to take the liquor license away, they can't. It stays with that, with that physical address.
But they changed the, but they changed the business name, even though it's the same address.
Yeah.
They changed the business name.
Still with the transfer.
So in the future, if they, I, I don't know, I don't know the legalities of a great lease agreement, if it's legit for them to say, hey, you don't get this if you don't get to take the business. That was up to her lawyers to get that all figured out and get it correct, you know? But if it isn't correct, yes, Pizza Barn LLC could say, no, it's ours. I'm going to submit for a location transfer and move it. So, I mean, that's up to Pam if she wants to risk that or if they have the backing for that to.
I was just going to tell, it was Canyon Springs.
Right, okay.
That she was able to get. She swapped her restaurant one out for the one from Canyon.
No.
Oh, no, it was Travel Plaza.
I was going to say.
They got, the Travel Plaza got that one when it became available. They decided not to remodel, and so when that one became available, that's the one that Pam bought.
Okay, thank you for the information.
We had it advertised and there was two people, Pam and
I don't remember, but that's how that, because we, we don't have very many.
Right.
So when that one became available, she switched hers for that.
Okay, well, thank you for the information. So the gap got me.
Yes.
Years passed. They didn't have a full liquor. They had a malt area.
Correct. That's why I was curious of waiting.
The restaurant, they had to submit their food certificate, all that stuff. They couldn't sell off premises if they wanted to, so, yeah.
She might have only been the, been the only one the last time. There is no puzzle for the ones.
It was Canyon Springs.
I felt like it was between the two, but, and that was last year sometime.
This is the big problem. Thank you. Because it was a big fat.
I still think, I mean, my first opinion is we need to put this on hold until at least the right boxes get checked on the application.
Yes, how you're explaining this now.
I mean, I would table, I'd be in favor of table on that one until everything is done on the paper.
Oh, is there something else you want me to get more of or?
A lot of clarification.
I don't know if it would be easier just to have them come here.
That's what I was saying. It might be nice just to have them come in and explain what's going on.
Yeah, I feel better.
Mr. Chairman. I think you could reach out to Pam and Sandra.
Chairman, like the motion, is the table the transfer?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
If you table, you're going to have to give a date.
Well, I mean, table till the next meeting.
Next meeting. And then I was, if they can come in or not, that's the only issue. If one of them could show up, at least it might help.
If it's important, it'd be.
Yeah.
So that kind of rolls me into the next part a little. Oh, goody. I do have.
Just a second. We got everything? For this most of it?
No, I'm going to hold back just so you guys can wonder where it is.
I, just when we do do the renewals, I do have Pam's to renew for July in case this one did fall through. But is that it for transfer? Are we good to move on here?
Yeah. I don't have any more questions on the transfer. I have the one transfer.
Okay, okay. So then I just have our regular renewals. I have Pam's at Pizza Barn. There was one with Upton Golf Course that I had to get clarification for. One of the, as a club, there's a state statute that you have to have fifty, or more than fifty members to apply for it. Well, she had only marked fifty, and she had in the past, but it was never caught by State, but they did catch it this year, and so they sent it back. Well, then I got ahold of her and she said she miscalculated because it's fifty members, but some of them are family memberships. So if you count the individuals within the family, there's seventy. So she is more than fifty required by the state statute. So I don't know if you guys need more clarification on that, if you're good. Other than that, everybody else was good. BFW, the Upton Inn, Buckhorn Bar and Grill, and the Flyin' Bee, and then the West End currently is operating as a non-operational. They do have a year, which I got that back in December, that they were non-operational. So we do renew it until December. If they're not operational or haven't sold, then this license will become available.
And that's a full?
Uh, it's the same as retail.
Okay, it's retail.
Yeah.
Well, do we want to table the one till the next meeting? The President's Board? Or? But I was, if we accept Pam's and then we table that one if we've already accepted?
That's okay, as far as I understand, because we'll still do the transfer. If the transfer is approved, then it gets transferred, and then they still have to resubmit a renewal for July. This just guarantees that it's safe.
The only transfer we had was the Pizza Barn one. The rest of them were renewals?
Yep.
Do we need a motion to table? I'll make a motion to table the transfer of the liquor license of the Pizza Barn until our next meeting. If the people involved can come to the next meeting.
Second.
Got a motion to transfer, table the June 3rd, table the transfer from Pizza Barn to
Pizza Barn LLC.
Pizza Barn LLC till June, June 3rd meeting. Discussion, Mark.
The motion was if they can show up. So I would like to strike that part if we might. If they don't show up, then we determine whether we're tabling this again for the next meeting.
Set up here, the motion maker.
You can sit up here. You can sit up here. You're more than welcome to.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of tabling that except?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we need a motion for acceptance of the renewals.
Make the motion to approve the transfer of, or the renewals of the pending liquor license.
Sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
Would you list them in the motion?
Pizza Barn? Upton Golf. BFW. Upton Inn. Buckhorn Bar and Grill. Flyin' Bee, Cambria, and West End Bar and Grill. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, the motion on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for that explanation.
Yes.
Yeah. Chairman, signature on auditor's engagement letter. Beck, you now listen to us.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Yeah, it was.
Exciting.
Before we move forward with this, I'd like to mic all up here sometime just for a, just a budget kind of deal, discussion, and give a few looks for, and there's things that we do, that we could do better.
It'd be cool if you did Vegas IP.
And, and just to help someone, you know, there's things that still I look in there and I'm like, well, now how is this figured into the budget? And it'd be nice for some clarification on.
Yeah, it'd be wonderful. And we could also maybe ask those couple of questions that we had about the, the weekend.
I can answer to it if you have it for you.
Yay, good luck.
Make a motion to approve the chairman's signature on auditor's engagement letter with Leo Riley and company.
Motion on the floor, is there a second? Care on the table, I have it on the floor.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, we have it. That year ending June 3rd, 2025.
So, okay, the motion maker?
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
Put it in the second, I see it's okay. You got the floor. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the chairman's signature on the engagement letter with Leo Riley and company, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right here. Would you need both of them to go? It says, aye, are they looking for my signature? And then, aye, all right, then, West End County.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a Bootleggers Liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
Mr. Chairman, may I take a couple of minutes?
Great.
Yeah, we're all ready. It's good. Thank you. Break before, after, five minutes, whatever.
You're trapped, Bobby? I am. I'm just going to take the chair and run all the way across the courthouse with it. Clear path.
What are you doing, David?
I want you to be back. It's what retirement's supposed to be about, isn't it? Well, it ain't your retirement. You got a boss twenty-four hours a day. You can retire. You can't leave this boss at work either, can you? Nope. Thing next about work, you leave them after eight, nine hours, and it's done beautifully.
Yeah.
How you doing, Garrett?
How are you? It's a little wetter than it used to be, too.
Okay.
Sit here for a while. I'm still there. That's good. Not putting any bed, it's great. Yep.
I'm wearing the screens. They're different PTSD.
My sister's parked up there and stuff. She might lose her. We should have something to say.
The date.
Damn, it's probably just still happening, they're all done.
Well, I guess there's probably even a club. I think we're going to brand a bunch instead. Running out of days already.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great.
Good to have you, Mark.
I'm great, thanks. Thanks for doing all the rain dancing.
Oh, great.
It's working, everything is green.
It's beautiful. It's beautiful. Since I don't like the four-letter word, F-I-R-E.
It's one, as long as it continues through the song.
Yeah, we don't need.
I might just be making Kenley.
That's a good place. We're saying we have to have that.
Moving on, we'll go to food pantry update, Pastor Mike.
He just won't tell. He's still out?
Oh, he's a gentleman, okay.
Yeah. So if we could.
Yeah, we'll wait a minute.
Thank you.
Apologize. No, Pastor Mike.
Yeah, there's a, there seems to be a funny yellow thing hanging out in the sky right now. You can see it a little bit, I wonder what that is?
Sun?
Light be, light be. Yeah. We don't like the rain.
There's a man.
My apologies. Don't worry, you're up, sir.
Hi. Good morning, I'm Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Pastor Monte Rankenberg. I'm with the Moorcroft Interfaith Community Regional Food Pantry. We're based out of Moorcroft. And with me today is Ramsey Blakeman, who's vice president, and Myrna, and these folks here are all some of our Weston County volunteers. Just a little bit about us. The Moorcroft Interfaith Community was started as an emergency preparedness organization for our part of Crook and Campbell County. One of our first organizational meetings, we were informed by then the Food Bank, the Rockies, now the Food Bank of Wyoming, that Crook and Weston County were the number one and number two most food insecure counties in the state of Wyoming. That changed our mission to the food pantry. We began very small, mostly Moorcroft, a few people from Rosette. But as word got out about the pantry, we started getting people from communities in Crook County requesting help, people in Upton, Rosette, Wyadak. And so we've continued to grow until today. We're serving all of Crook, Weston County, and part of Campbell County. In our pantry, we serve somewhere between 250, 300 households per pantry. We do two pantries per month. And we've got the brochure here for you that you can kind of look through on your own if you have any questions. It's not 100% up to date because our numbers keep growing exponentially. In October of last year, the Food Bank of Wyoming, who had been doing mobile pantries in Crook County, removed those pantries. And then in, was it February or March of this year, the mobile pantry was taken from Newcastle as well. And as a result of that, on the second page here, it says the monthly pantry totals. If you go to the third unit there, you'll see that our box count from Weston County has just gone up dramatically. We're picking up somewhere between 20 to 30 new families in Weston County at each of our pantries. And currently, Weston County is 50% of the food boxes that we serve. These folks have graciously worked with us. We worked with the food pantry in Upton, we started there. And they didn't have the means of getting it, so Randy's been delivering up to 80 boxes to Upton. And then O-Sage, we had volunteers from O-Sage and volunteers from Newcastle that would come to the pantry there and pick them up. O-Sage, we now are working with Myrna. So we deliver 100 boxes to Upton. And then O-Sage comes to Upton and picks up 50 to go there. And so that's just basically what's going on. We wanted to be able to introduce you to what we're doing and what we hope to do. We currently are in the MTC building there in Moorcroft. We have the, we did have the whole east part of the junior high room, but that's what the town of Moorcroft is now rebuilding into their town offices, the police department and things. So they moved us to the cafeteria, and we're outgrowing that area. We spend about $10,000 to $12,000 a month on food purchases through the Food Bank of Wyoming. We also work with the local grocery store. They contact us and let us know what the pilot deals are and give us warehouse prices so we can purchase some things cheaper. We're trying to build a building. We're just getting started. The town of Moorcroft has provided us with three town lots to build on. Our first building would be a 100 by 42-foot building, which would allow us to do everything inside. Currently, we stage our food outside. And you can just about bet on our pantry Thursday, it's either going to be snowing or very hot. It just seems to work that way. So we're looking for ways to move inside. This would allow us to unload our trucks inside, stage our food, and have drive-through for people to pick up. Then the next stage would allow us to move our refrigeration in, give us more storage and office space. But we just wanted you to be aware of what we're doing, see if there's any way that the county commissioners might be able to help. And also, if you're aware of any grants that we might be able to apply for. We have so far resisted most federal grants. They want to try and tell you how you can use it once you get it and who you can serve. We were a TFAAP agency, but we found that there were families who were as much as $25 over, and they couldn't get food even though they were desperately in need of it. So if you have any questions, I've given you information on city by city and county information. Also, there's a letter there from the superintendent at the school in Upton. One of the things we do, we also have a Tote to Hope program, and we take food to the schools. We have food available at like the Moorcroft Police Department, the Moorcroft Library. So in summer, kids can go in, just ask for food, and they'll be given a tote that has about 10 to 12 snack meals in it for the kids there. We also have been working with our local fire departments on the emergency side. We can get some things that we order very cheaply or even free, like right now, ghost hydration drinks. There's lots of them available, so we are getting them. We've taken them to the Moorcroft Fire Department, Crook County Fire, and also to the Pine Haven Fire Department, so that we just try to have things ready for an emergency. Our goal is, one, meet the immediate food insecurity needs in our area in northeast Wyoming, which includes, of course, Weston, Crook County, part of Campbell County. Also, we try to have an emergency fund so that we've got money in reserve in case of disruption of the supply system. We have, of course, our building project. And then our end goal is to have a 90-day emergency food reserve for this part of the county or state. Because what we find out is, like in COVID, in the wintertime, stores only have about two or three-day food supply, and then shelves start getting very empty very quickly. So our goal is to have an emergency food reserve that will be up here already. And so then it can be transferred to any of the areas that need assistance in case of, you know, major fires or storms, whatever's going on. That is kind of the short version, so you have any questions for me?
I think this is kind of an, I like this letter from Mr. Samuelson. It's, it says a lot that, you know, I understand there's very kids suffering everywhere, so.
Yes.
That's good.
And we just got a letter from the first lady's office, too. She just got back from Washington, DC, and they're expecting to have a 30% cut in SNAP program. 40% of those who receive SNAP are children. And so we're anticipating that the need for food assistance on local level is going to go up in the next, you know, few months. Just depending on what happens with all of that. So we're just trying to seek support wherever we can. We write for grants on a continual basis. We have a very broad base of support through individuals, congregations in our area. And we've even had several ranchers lately that have been bringing us beef. Broad base of support through individuals, congregations in our area. And we've even had several ranchers lately that have been bringing us beef to donate as well. So we try to, you know, use all the assets we can, and we work very hard making sure every dollar we spend is beneficial to the community.
Thank you, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Klein? I'd like to kind of add to what Pastor Mike talked about. Two months, a little two months ago, they did eliminate the position here in Newcastle. And about a month ago, they did contact Steffi and I. They still want to continue doing it here in Newcastle. We do have the fairgrounds, we hand out. But we fall way short because, like I said, ours comes, it used to be once a month, but right now it's once every two months. But they talked, Steffi and I, last week, we actually took it off. And we are still planning every two months having it in Newcastle. But we do, we fall very short for the people in need in Weston County. I mean, you see the people that come through there, and they are people that do need. I mean, we do, we fall very short, once every two months. I don't feel it's enough. I don't feel once a month is enough, like you, like you used to say, you hand it out once every two months.
What, two weeks?
Two weeks.
Every, twice a month.
Two weeks, but, you know, hopefully, they can get things turned around and we can go back to once a month at least here in Weston County. But ours is not off of grants, we're paying, it's just all donated food. Whatever they can get, they ship to us. And we actually hand out somewhere in the neighborhood of 210 boxes in that period, whether it's one month or two months, we's handing it out. We have a lot of good volunteers come in and help us out there for the duties of fairgrounds to put the boxes together and distribute the food and stuff like that. But like I said, if you hit it brand and egg, we fall way short in Weston County.
And I'm sure you're aware, but like most rural counties in Wyoming, Crook and Weston are kind of 25, or 20% higher senior citizen population over the state average, 25 over the national average, plus a handicap population is 20% higher than the state average as well. So even though our job vacancy shows only like 2% or 4%, whatever it is, when you look at the statistics of the employed, I think Weston County's like at 53%, and Crook County's at 62-something. So that's an indication of how many retired people and handicap people that we have who are not able to work and stuff. So we're just seeing a lot of need. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you. Thank you for all the good work.
At the food bank, you can't, like the ranchers can't donate food unless it's processed at a USDA or something plant?
Well, it doesn't have to be USDA, because in Wyoming, Tyler Limholm, he got a bill passed that allows the market direct from ranch to market. It does need to go through a recognized processing plant. I mean, like you can't go butcher it in your backyard and then donate it. It'd have to come through one of the custom packing plants. But, and then some organizations themselves have rules on what they can take. But we don't, as long as it's done at a recognized plant, well, then we accept it.
And like wild game and stuff, you can accept that, too?
Yes, as long as it comes through.
Process.
Because.
Oh, same thing?
Right, yes. Because they, the state has the, what do they call it, the field to play where hunters can donate their game and pay for the cost, and then it's donated. And we receive meat that way from both the governor's office and through Coors in Gillette, where they process it, and then we can accept it through them.
Thank you.
Meeting here in a couple of minutes with some gals that are out in the waiting, but if there's any other questions quick. Thank you, sir, appreciate it, everybody that's involved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for what you do.
Don't forget your drawing there.
Yes, thank you.
Pastor, is there a, have you ever visited with our library gals about intention to do something? Even at?
I haven't yet here.
We're like it up near Newcastle or whatever, and kids may be coming in.
Right, and that's where we like, is any place that kids will be coming in during the summer when they might not have a chance, and everything is set there, no questions asked. They just come in and say, I want something, and we give it to them. We also, Upton School, Moorcroft School, and we have had it at Hugh up in Summit Sundance, where we take food there, pulls that letter, we gave it, and then they hand it out through the nurses and teachers.
Thank you very much. Pastor Jerry, can you hear us?
I can. Good morning, Commissioners.
I didn't even hear you.
Come on, go out.
Technology's moving in Weston County.
So.
Don't push your luck.
You and maybe Jeannie are here for an update on our Newcastle BLM RMP revision, National Forest Plan, and Thunder Basin.
Yeah, Jeannie and I are here. So I will say, I will say, Commissioners, my report's going to be fairly short. I have had some issues with my father's health, so I've been in Billings with him for two weeks and just got back. So I'm trying to catch up. I'm going to do a quick update regarding Newcastle BLM. And then we had a meeting last week with the forest. And then we had a meeting last week with the Forest Service that I was not able to attend, but Jeannie was. So she's going to give that update for us today. And then I will have a couple just other things I'll touch base with you, just informational before we hang up. So regarding Newcastle, I know Commissioner Wagner, you were able to join us for a brief moment at WCCA's NIPA conference in Newcastle a couple weeks ago. Good to see you. It was, it was a good meeting. I think the great thing is we did have Chad Kraus, the Field Manager for Newcastle BLM at that meeting. And we were able to talk to him quite a bit about our project. So there's no set schedule yet for when we will see the administrative final EIS. But Chad is hoping that we might be able to review that. Remember, that's not a public document, that's pre-decisional, so it'll just be a cooperating agency review. And we're hoping that that might come out the end of June, maybe July. And so we'll be, Commissioner Todd, we'll have to go through that and do a thorough review before they move towards the final. It doesn't appear as though Newcastle is one of the big things that this administration is tracking right now. So I think that they are just moving forward on the timeline that they had established. I do think we're going to see some changes in the, from the draft to the final. I do think that the county's comments weigh heavily on some of the changes that we're going to see. And then, of course, I anticipate, I don't know for sure, I haven't seen the language, but I anticipate from a Biden administration to a Trump administration, we're going to get some decisions, maybe in modifications, that will be more in our favor or that we wanted. So I'm eager to see it. I can't wait. But I just wanted you to know what the timeline was. Are there any questions on the Newcastle RMP revision?
I don't think so. I, I've noticed that things have really slowed down, for sure.
It's actually giving us a moment to catch our breath, because I think once things start falling, they're going to be fast and furious. I know that for other agencies, I've been on calls from like EPA and others that are kind of a little bit ahead of the game as far as movement. I think it depends on when your secretaries came in and how things are falling out. We still don't have a BLM director, and I'm not certain of when that's going to be filled. But I think once everything starts coming out, they're going to want to get some of these rules and some of these policy changes in place well before the end of the Trump administration. So I think we're going to be busy. Enjoy your moment of catching your breath. I certainly am. And I think we're going to see a lot of movement here probably, I'm going to say, early fall, maybe, we'll start seeing things come out. So I'm going to turn it over to Jeannie to give an update of Black Hills, and then I'll come back and just update you on a few other things. Jeannie?
Yeah, I attended a bunch of meetings. Resiliency meeting down in Rapid City is mostly South Dakota and Wyoming. It could be government officials or private citizens. One of the things I took away from that is that NACO, the Public Lands Council, was meeting in Rapid City the last, at the end of May. I don't know if that has occurred or not, or if anybody was a part of that. Sarah Anderson with the Conservation District hosted some tours through the forests. And I know the governor has been up here, and I'm not, I'm not a part of those tours. I believe they're timber tours. If anybody else has any information on that, that would be great. So that was a resiliency meeting. Kirk County Commissioners, on Wednesday afternoons, they have all the government officials come. So the ranger from the Bear Lodge Forest comes and does a report. He says, of course, in the Bear Lodge Forest, fire is now working five days a week, there's timber sales going on, the seasonally closed trails are now open. They have not seen in that office a reduction of staff. And then that goes to the cooperators meeting, which is exclusively government officials. Lou Conroy is head of the Forest Plan Revision, and also the Mountain Planning Group was there. So Lou said that the Bear Lodge, I mean, the whole Forest Service at Black Hills lost 16 people. Some of them was early retirement, some just left. There could be a reduction of forest in that. So what I'm saying is, forest-wise, there's 16 people gone, but in the Bear Lodge itself, haven't really seen much reduction. The reason we have not had meetings, and we've kind of been in limbo, is with administration change, they were not allowed to talk to cooperators unless they had permission from above. I don't know if that's regionally, I don't know if that's Washington, but they were not allowed to talk to us. They can now, and it really was refreshing. The plan revision is going through, they're getting stuff done. I don't know if there's such a thing as slower than its nails pace, but that's what we're looking at. The big thing that they're doing now is, you know, there's a lot of topics within the revision plan. They're doing one topic at a time. They're giving information to Oregon State rather than sharing it with the cooperators to look at, so we don't know what that's going to bring. Well, one of the things we are working on is the wilderness areas, the wilderness designations are, there were five nominated in Kirk County, now there are three. We have access to the map, and we have access to a survey, which the Forest Service wants everybody to fill out and return to them by June 15th. So yesterday, I met with two people from Kirk County, our mapping guy and our Rothenbridge guy, to start on the survey. Like I said, there are three areas in Kirk County. There's the inventory wilderness area in Sand Creek, there is Indian Cara, and there's an area northeast of Sundance that they are, they're putting out. That doesn't mean this will go through. The Forest Service is mandated to recommend wilderness areas. There is one recommended down in Fall River, in Custer, and then a lot of them are around Mount Rushmore Memorial. So we're going to do our best to give them the data. It's not going to be, they don't need like documentation. Right now, it's opinion. But for what it's worth, it is moving forward, and we will definitely, through the commissioners, we'll tell them our opinion of a wilderness area in Kirk County and in the Black Hills period. That's pretty much it. If anybody has any questions, they can always reach out to me, and we can discuss it further. I'd love to know what, whether the governor was here or the NACO information. If anybody's got that, they sure email me about it. That's all I have, Drew. Thanks. Any questions for Jeannie?
Yes, sir.
Hi, you two. Thanks for doing what you do. I'm curious about how, being a cooperating agency, don't they still have to fulfill the coordination, and so they're leaving you out, leaving us out? How, why, what's up with that?
Well, that's a good question. And the South Dakota counterpart from Drew is named Mitch. And he did question them, and he was a lot more polite than you about asking that, because the cooperating agency, it is going against the planning rule. And they have no answer for why they're feeding their information to Oregon State and everybody and not giving it to us first. The danger's going to be, just like the assessment, where they, somebody wrote that there were glaciers in the, in the Black Hills, and some of the stuff that was totally off the wall, you know. The danger's going to be, just like the assessment, where they, somebody wrote that there were glaciers in the, in the Black Hills, and some of the stuff that was totally off the wall. You know, it delays things. We have the common knowledge, we have the knowledge of this area, and we should be included. So that's absolutely right. It is a, they're doing it wrong.
And I think, Commissioner Ertman, that's been a thorn of contention that we've had since the assessment started. But we've gone through five acting supervisors since the assessment started a couple years ago, so that's probably part of the problem. I think the other thing is, with this new, so I got different direction. I was never told when we were in DC that the Forest Service couldn't talk to us. I think it depended on the agency and probably the people in charge. I know that we've been talking to Chad, who's the BT, head of the BT. We were talking to Russ, Russ Bacon, and Rob Robertson on Thunder Basin are no longer there. They just dearly buy out. So we're looking at two positions that need to be filled. And I just think that there's a lot of chaos. They are still getting the Mountain Planning Services Group up and running, and I think will take a significant role as we move forward. But this is, this is going to be a problem if it continues this way, I assure you. So hoping it gets better as we move forward with the new administration.
Drew, I would like to add, Mountain Planning Group has lost some employees also. The head of the LIDAR has retired, they've not filled that position. So yeah, we could, yeah, I would agree with you completely. It's going to take a while.
So would it behoove us, I know it wouldn't hurt, but maybe it doesn't even help, but would it behoove us to write a letter to Representative Hagaman?
Um, I think that that is maybe a arrow in our quiver that we can think about at the right time. I think right now, they're just figuring out, you know, the Forest Service, the direction, who's staying, who's going. I will also say, I think there's going to be a lot of conversation about who's going to do what. So, and I, and I know that we're over time already, and not to go down a rabbit hole with you, but I think there's going to be changes in how the Forest Service does things. Because historically, and across every forest, what we're doing is not sustainable. We can't do it. Meaning, we go through these very detailed resource management plans at a high level, they've got too much detail in them. Then the Forest Service never gets the funding, take Thunder Basin, for example. We never get the funding to implement the plan, and so we're legally vulnerable. It's not working. I think they're looking at, are there ways, and are there some things that we can send back to the states to better manage instead of in DC? And I suspect as we get more cuts with, with people inside the agency, we are still 66% minerals and 50% service owned and managed by the federal government. We cannot increase timber production or unleash American energy without our federal partners. In order to do that, we have to get NIPA done, permitting done, inspections, all of the things. And so without that, you're creating a bottleneck. So I think also, and we've said this to them in DC, I think also, we're going to be looking at not only what can the states better do, I think you're going to see a lot of outsourcing to third-party contractors, because I just don't think that we're going to have the staffing inside the agencies to do the job and to do it timely, in the timeframe they want it. And when you look at the reconciliation bill, the reconciliation bill in the House has a lot of provisions that came out of the National Resource Committee, which is Harriet Hagaman's committee, Representative Hagaman. There were several provisions in that regarding oil and gas leasing, permitting timeframes, NIPA requirements. They also looked at prohibiting the implementation, meaning no budget, prohibiting the implementation for first management plan, the Buffalo No-Co leasing decision. They're looking at different royalty rates. They raised under the Biden administration, they're looking at going back. So I think you're seeing all of this stuff happening right now, and as soon as we get some clarity with the reconciliation budget on where agencies are going to get funding and where they're going to get funding for, I think then we'll start seeing some changes. So the House wants to pass that by Memorial Day. The Senate is hoping to get it passed before, I think, July 4th. And those are going to be really good things to keep your eyes on, because I think that's going to set the stage for how some of this stuff is going to fall out.
And I know we've worked with Senator Lummis, and she is head of, what is that, Drew? Like the Western Senate?
The caucus.
Western caucus. So yeah, we certainly got that in our pocket to reach out to our congressional people. They've been very cooperative, but we got some stuff we need to figure out locally first. So Drew, if you could call me today, I could fill you in on more. There's lots.
That was good. I just have one more quick thing as a courtesy to my commissioners. You know, for Thunder Basin, we've got leadership holes. We're looking at litigation. We haven't, we haven't had direction yet, but I suspect we're going to have to do a supplemental EIS for that decision to comply with litigation unless some changes come up. The last thing is the Grants Management Office. Just wanting you to know, we are still waiting for some of this stuff to fall out, to see what federal programs are going to survive, the cuts, and what aren't. But I will tell you that the Grants Management Office is working very closely with our federal delegation. Senator Lummis is really taking the lead. If you've got grants that have been stalled or you don't know the status of them, please let us know. We're working with her. She's having meetings with the White House frequently, like on a weekly basis. And here's some of the things that we're trying to do through the Grants Management Office. If your program is going to be cut, what we want to know is, what are the three to five things in that program that were so important to you that you have to have it? Most of the cuts are going to have to do with climate change, greenhouse gas, DEI. So those are the things that are being removed by the Trump administration. But if you've got things that are really important, we're trying to capture that and work with our federal partners to put those things into a program that's going to survive so that we have a shot of continuing to use those funds on the ground. The one thing that we've said is, we are well-positioned in Wyoming to help the president meet his priorities of increasing, unleashing American energy and increasing timber production. But we still have impacts to our communities. Our communities still have water, sewer issues, affordable housing, housing issues. Those don't go away, and that can't be ignored, and we have to have federal funding to implement those projects. So we are working hard on that, and I just wanted to let you all know.
I'll make this brief. There isn't a prairie dog in the Thunder Basin that cares, so I just don't want them to be crazy again.
I know.
Thank you, ladies. We appreciate the update.
Jeannie? The NACO's WIR is meeting in Rapid City. They start tomorrow. It's the 21st through the 23rd. It's where NACO is.
Oh, okay.
In Rapid. Well, that just didn't really.
Was anybody, was anybody from Weston County going to go to those that could maybe report back on that?
I wasn't planning on it. I know Jim Ford, Weston County Commissioner, he's on that WIR committee, so he might be good to reach out to.
Okay, I'm going to the Resilient Forest Meeting tomorrow, and the head of South Dakota Forestry is supposed to make a report. I know he was going to shake them around and everything, so maybe I'll have something for you guys next month.
Chance Caleb might go. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Last question.
Sorry, Mr. Stopp. No problem, I'm a little long there. Nope. You got the paperwork, I think Marty has it down there.
What's, what's lined on me? No, you don't have to sign in. It's just that we got this for Cassidy.
Is that what you're visiting with this about?
This is Cassidy.
Oh, okay. So that is a, that's a standard process that the Public Defender's Office goes through, and everybody is on the page. By the time that they're bringing on a new public defender, whether it be a full-time or a part-time contract position, they send that letter out to various stakeholders to let us know what's going on. As you may or may not know, we are at peak crisis with public defenders in the sixth judicial district. We are allotted seven. We are down to one with a couple contracts being done. It's bad enough that in Campbell County, the Public Defender's Office has declined to take any more appointments on any mistemblers. So the circuit court judges are assigning those out to private attorneys. Public Defender's Office is paying the cost of them. And actually, it's bad enough at this point in time that they're not even working off a volunteer list. If you have a beating heart and a law license, and you're in Campbell County, you may get assigned a mistemblery.
You're going to have to quit kicking them out of your pool.
I know you wanted to talk about some court-appointed counsel in juvenile matters. We don't know what questions you have, or if you want to just provide a background on how that process goes, and we'll work questions from there.
Carter was, I'm sorry. Mr. Chair? I think Carter was a question on. I think Carter was a question on how the process begins and statutorily what we're required to uphold on our end in funding it. And what else were we, there were several things that we were talking about.
I would go with the same thing. One of our biggest struggles that we have is it, is just trying in the budget process to understand. And sometimes when we read, it's court-appointed or judge-appointed, and our question is, is fully understanding where we sit as the payers of such things, that it leaves us in sometimes quite a strange place, that how can we help? Our printing press that we have down in the basement broke, and we can't find a wizard. And so what we're trying to do is find this compromise, that if they are court-appointed or they're judge-appointed, if we can find somewhere where we can get to a place where this is manageable for tiny little counties like us. I can imagine Washtenkey, Big Horn is probably going through the same thing. That trying to find an amount of money that we see as, it's getting crazy. It's getting nuts. If you have a problem with your public defenders, we're having a problem with money. So I guess that's what our struggle is, and every time one of these comes across, we, you know, we get heartburn. And we want to understand how we can get to a point where this can be just manageable.
And I'm sorry, Judge Healy has joined us as well. He was having some technical issues earlier, and if Judge Healy feels the need to trend in on anything, I'm sure we'll ask. First of all, let me hit on a couple pieces. This will be 11 years now. Next month is 11 years for me on the bench. I have learned the one thing, I have control over a lot of things. One thing I don't have control over is the workload, just the timing, the pace, the flow. So, I mean, I think in budgeting, you really have to take a look back and say, all right, this is maybe what's been the three-year rolling average, but know that there's going to be, you know, there's going to be a pretty broad standard deviation potentially on that. The other one is just counting it up by cases. Probably isn't an accurate budget measure. There are some of these juvenile, and these are abuse neglect cases. There are some of these in which they open up and they're closed in three months. There's some of them that go on for multiple years. And so it's not all, you can't take, you know, one case is going to cost this much, because it all depends on the real intricacies there. The process itself is, the parents are ordered to appear before the court at an initial appearance. They come in, there's required advisements we give them. One of them per statute is that they are, they're entitled to be represented by an attorney, and if they can't afford an attorney, the court can appoint one to represent them. And that's from Title 14, 3, I forget the year.
Let me remember.
So then they fill out an affidavit that they complete under oath, and then the judge assigned to that case will have to review it. There are no strict numerical standards on whether that gets granted or not. It's up to the court to review it. And I think one thing that's important to recognize there is that the issue isn't always how much income does this family have? It's how much liquid assets do they have right now? liquid assets do they have right now? Because in order to engage an attorney, you usually lay down a retainer. You're paying upfronts. And these things move very quickly. From an initial appearance, we will then, usually two weeks later, have our next hearing, which is a scheduling conference that we put in place, because everyone's kind of got their feet on the ground about what's going on at this point in time. Then by statute, we're required to resolve these cases, if it has to go to trial, 60 to 90 days out. So you have to look at this financial situation of the family and say, okay, is it all plausible that in the next two weeks, this person can come up with $4,000 or $5,000 to retain an attorney? Otherwise, you're probably talking about appointing counsel. You can order those, that there be payments made on those. There's not a good process for tracking those, and frankly, for most of them that I see, the amount of available income in the family would lead to a very, very general pay. I'm sure the juice wouldn't be worth the squeeze. But that is something that we always look at, is whether this person, even though they don't have the money upfront, can they pay a couple hundred dollars a month toward that or not? So that's the, and as you mentioned, you know, Washtenkey, Big Horn, one of the other things Weston County has to recognize now, and Crook County is in the same situation, is you're dealing with the effects of being in a legal basket. We're bringing attorneys on these over from Gillette, because we just don't have, we don't have the attorneys in town to do them anymore. And that's just contracted, I've been, was first admitted to the bar 30 years ago, and I've watched things concentrate from the small communities to, you know, slightly larger communities, Gillette, Casper, Cheyenne, and now things really regionalizing on a lot of things. So if you need that attorney, you're getting them out of Billings, you're getting them out of Denver, you're maybe getting them out of Casper or Cheyenne. And that's just really been a change over the last three decades in the legal market. The, you know, two attorney firm in a small community is really in decline, and that has effects on budgets. Because, as I tell people all the time, one thing that's not negotiable is geography. And Gillette's still going to be as far from Newcastle as it is, no matter what, and we got to pay. The other thing to know is that these attorneys who are doing them are doing them at probably half of market rate. They're getting $125 an hour, and that might even be just for courtroom time, though I think abuse neglect could maybe knock us for courtroom time. And going rate is probably 200 to 250.
I had a couple of questions. I guess the, one of them was how active you looked at going after some, I guess, would it be your court-appointed fees are returned back to the county? I guess you answered that pretty good. I guess that would be a hard place to sit and know how a family would react if they had to come up with $200 here and there, and what that might do to farther harm that situation that they're in, I don't know. But the other one was, I mean, in the last eight, 10 years here, has it exploded, the workload, compared to, do you think, 10 years ago? I mean, are we drastically getting worse, a higher workload every couple of years? I mean, is that part of it?
Well, and I could probably only fairly get a look back on the last three years, which is when I moved from circuit to district. I don't know, Judge Healy, do you have an indication of whether Weston County abuse neglects are on the rise or on the level?
You know, I think that's a really good question, and it's an interesting one, because I would say they probably are. I don't have the numbers in front of me. We haven't, we didn't do that and prepare it. We could probably have the clerk of District Court look at that. But, you know, one thing that happened, and I think Judge Costano would echo this, I'd say about the time Judge Costano came on as a District Court Judge, Jeannie Stone was hired as a special prosecutor for Weston County, and she focuses on juvenile delinquency and neglect cases. And when she came on board, I think there probably were more cases that came before the court, simply because there were cases that probably needed to come before the court that weren't coming before the court, because there wasn't the personnel at the county attorney's office to cover those cases. What do you think, Judge Costano? That's kind of a guess, but I have a feeling that when Ms. Stone focused on these kind of cases, we just naturally got more of them.
And I think that's fair. I'm going to call mine an impression, because it's three syllables, and that's more impressive. My impression is that they are, I will tell you, I have not seen, we're not getting frilled with these cases, Marla. These are not, someone's not doing the laundry.
So the cases are probably up along with the convictions. It's not just showing up and then, see you later, you know, there's really nothing here.
Correct. Correct. You're going through, and so you also understand that a juvenile case is a process, and the needs of that family really will dictate how long that process is. We've had a few, and of course, these are confidential, so I can't disclose anything about them other than generally. We've had one particular case that has been going on for a while, and it's at a very near conclusion. Matter of fact, it is concluded at this point in time, but it was a very, very high-need It was a matter of whether we were going to have a dead kid or not. Yeah, sometimes you got to spend money. And, you know, dead kids.
And I, I'm sorry, Judge. I don't want to just, you know, feel the breeze, if you build it, they will come, that just because there's a special prosecutor now in Weston County and Crook County helping with these cases, that we're just generating more cases because they need something to do. I really want to emphasize that when we get these cases out of Weston County, they are cases that need to be before the court. They are not close calls.
Makes sense.
Well, in the position that we're in, being in the budget, what happens when there's no more money? What do we do when there's no more? When we can no longer, when we can no longer get to our cushion accounts that we save for emergency-type things, what happens when that happens? Because what we're looking at is that the tunnel is narrowing, and the light is starting to look a lot like a freight train. And I don't, I don't know where we go to solve or try to mitigate this problem, because as it escalates, everything else in this county degrades. So we can't put money on the roads. We can't fix our county buildings. We can't give our employees a raise, much less hire attorneys at the rate that they weren't. So my question is, and while I'm going big umbrella here, where do we go when there is no more funding? What do we do?
Well, and I would go with, that's a conversation that probably needs to involve the legislature, and...
Then we need your help to do that.
We're more than willing. We're limited in some extent. We cannot lobby.
Correct.
We can educate. And certainly, this is an area in which we'd be more than happy to educate, and I can coordinate with the Supreme Court. And if you have colleagues around the state who are feeling the same thing, that may be a good way to do it, that we could coordinate through our legislative liaison committee and make a united front to say, these are real needs for real people in your communities, and the printing press doesn't work. And so it's got to come from somewhere. And I know the county is limited in what the county can do. The judiciary has 3% of the state budget? So we don't have, we don't have money. We have, it's waiting systems design. So those, the purse strings, sit in Cheyenne with the legislature.
I think that was a great question, Marty, because it's so accurate. I mean, sitting here, five, six years ago, I was hardly signing these things, I mean, pretty irregular. And now it seems like it's every month they're coming through. And we've almost drained this year our financial admin, which is always kind of a cushion account for emergencies. And if it's mental health or what it is in this county, I don't know what it is, but something's got to change. And these unfunded things that we're forced to pay for via state statute, like Title 25 and these issues, if we could get, even if we, I mean, I'm sure that the county commissioners in Crook County and even Niobrara probably see some of it, and these counties that just don't have a lot, could come together united and with your guys' help or anybody's help, this juncture, to try to get the state to help mitigate some of these problems.
And if that's, if that's an answer for this county, and it sounds like it is, then that's certainly something that I can take back to the judicial branch and say, hey, this is a topic that came up for discussion, and ask if we would be in support of it. I can't imagine we would not be. And to present, it's a tough climate. I mean, right now, break even is a win, but...
But we're not. That's the problem. We're not.
Well, I think us, you are doing the county a benefit by helping out with these children and everything else, and it behooves us to want to support you as well as we can financially. So, because I want to help your county. So, I mean, anything we can do to try to push that front, I don't, you know, it's conversations I probably need to have with J.D. and some of the other legislatures that represent us, and say, something's got to give a little bit here for us.
Well, imagine the dichotomy that we have, is that you just said that we're in a lawyer desert. So we tried to attract a lawyer to come here, to this county. We can't give them that money, because we're spending more money up in the courtroom. So the balance here is getting so interesting, we can't bring those people here to warrant that, because we're spending it over here. Now, we're in a weird place.
Well, and Mr. Chair, I may, there's a bit of a catch 22 there. Sometimes you, you got to figure out, I mean, if we could get, if we could get a lawyer who moved here and wants to do local work, then we correspond, and we probably will drop our costs on them, because at least we're not going to be having to have them come over from Gillette. That being said, if that's got to involve a financial incentive to make that happen, then you're going down before you're going up. Return on investment is theoretical until it's in the bank.
You got any other questions, Judge Costano? Judge Healy?
Thank you.
Thank you for taking your time to get on with this, Judge Healy.
Oh, I'm so happy to. I haven't met many of you yet during my visits over there, but I'd love to meet all of you at some point. Thanks for having me.
Well, you could bring us cookies or something up in the courtroom, and we'd be glad to show up.
Let's meet on this atmosphere, not in fear.
I just, I just want to, I don't, I don't want it to come across that we don't care about families and what you do at juvenile court. I think it's important that these things are coming across in your courtroom. Maybe they weren't before, because we didn't have people looking into it. Thank God, we have somebody doing it now. It's maybe saving some children from some very difficult situations, and maybe saving some families. It's really important. We just have to learn or figure out how to balance it out. We just have to learn or figure out how to balance it out. From some very difficult situations and maybe saving some families, it's really important. We just have to learn or figure out how to balance it out.
And I just, I wanna, absolutely offered that if you want to go forward with talking about making a coordinated presentation to the legislature as we're going forward, I'm more than happy to discuss that and coordinate with the judicial branch and with the District Court Judges Conference on that process.
We appreciate it. And I'll tell you, a couple of us wouldn't mind even sitting down and test. We're not as. We can not bother us.
But slip behind or through the cracks, maybe we discuss it night to next meeting if we have 10 minutes of some thoughts and ideas of how we could approach our legislature and because if any help at this juncture would be wonderful.
And Mr. Chairman, I guess that's what we're asking too, is for it to be both sides, to help. So if you go through that process, we're just trying to help.
Absolutely. And let me, if I may, Mr. Chairman, you know, yeah, there are very real costs to counsel. At the same time, as a general, as a general rule, when you have people who are unrepresented, particularly in something that is as relatively complex as a juvenile matter, the, those are going to consume more judicial time and the cost, it's just really a cost shifting and probably not a cost savings at all. And beyond that, the statute says that if they qualify, if they're in need, then we shall. But absolutely, I mean, this, I hope this will be a collaborative issue for us and I have every interest on behalf, not just of the four district court judges we have here in the six judicial districts, but on behalf of the district court judges throughout the state who hear these juvenile cases every day to ensure that we have a healthy robust system to do some important work.
I guess, I feel it's reassuring to know that you're willing to help us. Can't lobby but to educate. I mean, 90% of lobbying is educate. You know, so it's reassuring to know that, you know, if we go down this road, we have your support on that.
Absolutely. I appreciate it.
And Mr. Chairman, I just emailed the district court clerk to see if, because I think for the legislative committee that Judge Castano is on, and also for your benefit, it would probably be good to know if there has been an increase in numbers over the last five years. And she's going to hopefully look into that for us. And I know she's on this call too. So we'll be able to maybe get a, instead of just talking from our impressions, as Judge Castano said, we can get some art numbers for you.
Yeah, maybe Rick, he could come visit with us after, in a couple of weeks.
And Mr. Commissioner, we may have those numbers through Children's Justice Project as well. So.
Cool.
They may already, they may already be out there on a shelf somewhere. We just gotta find the shelf.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, everyone.
We have the juvenile kids.
All right. Mr. Parsons, you're up.
I'm up.
Yeah, been here all morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, my county commissioners. I'd like to first introduce myself. I'm Seth Parks. I work for In Home Services, a branch of Weston County Health Services. I'd like to thank you for your past and hope for continued support in In Home Services. I also don't envy the decisions you guys have to make as you reform with this budget. You guys have got a lot to go through. My goal is to provide some education and opportunity to answer some questions about what it is that I do and how I do it and the qualifications that we serve. You should have gotten a brief packet that I provided that kind of breaks down what our goals are and what we provide. I'd like to add some additional information to that as well. Well, 74% of the people that I have currently serving are on white housekeeping and homemaking. 48% of them are on personal cares. 15% are under chore and another 12% are just on respite care. It is the goal of my program to make people, allow them to stay home for as long as possible safely. There definitely comes that point when people are no longer safe and being able to stay at home and we need to encourage them to seek other means of living, whether it be assisted living or matter placement. The aides, when I last, when I tallied this up, we completed 1,281 visits across Weston County. We also traveled 17,306 miles. That means we lapped every mile in the county over seven times. We served over 58 people during that same time period and I did 582.75 hours of case management. An example of that is on page two. You have a breakout in the Excel spreadsheet of how I tracked all of my case management time. I can provide that for the last three years as well, but just as a snapshot of any given month, of time that I spent on either follow-up, renewals, initial contacts, or quarterly visits. I've had visits with every participant on my program every three months. They don't go very long without having contact with me. The legislation was good enough to renew our grant. I work in a partnership with the Wyman Community Living Section down in Cheyenne for $84,068, but this doesn't cover my entire operating budget, not even close. 54% are served within Newcastle city limits with 22% serving the county. Obviously, that 22% in the county makes up a lot of that 17,306 miles that we travel. We worked very hard in order to cut down the amount of miles that we have to travel. I have aides that live in Upton that service Upton. There's an Osage that's, you know, serviced around that area there in order to cut down as many miles as possible. 24% are also served in within the Upton city limits. They're also suggested to have a sliding fee scale that sets the fees that they are asked to pay. They, or majority of them are under $7 an hour, which is very reasonable and very low, but I have a few of them that are under $3 and even a few that are at $1 an hour. Simply they just can't afford to pay any more than that. The funding request that I'm having from the commissioners is actually the same amount, but my budget increases have gone up. So my whole percent of the budget that the commissioners I hope to provide is only 2.5% of my entire budget process or operating budget. Some other interesting fees and stuff like that, or some other interesting information that you might find the value in, is that if these people did not have In Home Services or other similar programs to have them remain home when their only option was to go to the nursing home, ultimately that burden would then fall onto the state through Medicaid. 63% of total nursing home residents back in 2016 were on Medicaid. That had a cost of over $8,000 a month. You know, we have collectively felt the burden of the increase in costs in groceries and everything else, and we're just doing whatever we can to allow our residents, county residents to live the best lives possible, to remain home for as long as possible.
Appreciate what you guys are doing. I think it's pretty beneficial to a lot of folks that are actually strapped and. Yeah. Any other questions for Mr. Parsons? Thank you for bringing that forward. I, you, I assume that envelope, the pie is there in Upton? You guys go in there and help with some individuals potentially that are.
I can't tell you that directly, but we service a lot of people everywhere they go.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough.
Very good. If anybody has any questions, we adapt to me either during business hours or outside. I don't care who you're with. I'm more than happy to answer any of the questions that the commissioners have got at any point in time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't. It's on the letter, my contact as far as phone and stuff like that, it's on the top of the letter.
Okay.
If you'd like some business cards, I could definitely provide those. Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We have a problem with the CMAC bids.
Did you guys all get the email that I sent you that they sent Marty? On that, it did not know how, how the amount that the timber line bid was, and I got that from, I have Amber call Marty. It was $84,030. I'll pass this email down again and add that on there.
So from the gist of what Jimmy told me, apparently some pages were missing, not necessarily. They have the right documents according to our checklist, but they didn't insert some pages, I think is what he said, that were associated with it. Oh, they didn't sign.
Wasn't signed.
At the bottom. Okay.
The first bid wasn't or the second or?
The one, the one that we accepted.
Was not signed.
They had a piece of paper that they forgot to sign.
Right. Which one mattered if we were in there and hadn't signed it?
No.
So they said you can either accept the timber line or you can re-bid it.
So the option right now is, do we redid the whole process, which Jimmy doesn't think would be a major deal if we decided to go that route. However, the issues could be, could be higher. It could be less bidders, but we can also accept timber line as it appears, their paperwork was appropriate and fit about.
You know, we take the risk of maybe only getting one bid or a higher, maybe not even getting bids. You guys get busy with jobs, how do you get somebody to bid it?
Mr. Chairman, I would agree. This gives me a window of opportunity. Because the season is approaching quickly, we may run out of contractors to do it because they get booked up.
What did Jim say was allotted for that project? Remember? Vocalist bitching for Tundra.
So we just did a budget adjustment last, what was it? Last week.
I think for a month, 86 or 87.
The, my other question would be, if we were to accept this today, is Timberline already built that?
Could be. They could reject it.
They could decline it.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's no, there's no contract signed. If there's a signed contract, we can hold it too. There's no contract signed, so they may say, we're busy and can't do it.
That would be your force to read the.
So the grant amount was 69,760, but there's probably a match.
Was the grant awarded in the amount that we, that the other company bid?
Their bid request.
It was less than 87,000.
Yeah, it was.
50.
50 something?
53 or something like that, I think.
50,000.
50,000.
Because I thought that Jimmy said it was plenty. If we wanted to.
With the weather getting nicer and things this summer, if we're gonna put this out for bid while they're probably engaging with other jobs, I can't foresee the price of those bids being lower in a timely fashion. And I'm not interested in gambling with the county's money. At least we have a dollar amount that I believe to be within the dollar that was discussed earlier. There's a chance they could come in and over, but that's, that's some gambling on a project.
Yeah, one thing I do know, remember all the phone calls we were getting two weeks ago? Those roads are now on steroids, being destroyed. So Jimmy and Jack, a bunch are way behind on trying to get things done already, not do to their fault, just make sure the beach and the spring weren't being, some of the other issues that damage roads.
What's been going on for so many years now is that, is a concerted effort to destroy that nationalism. That is, to take away the ability of a country to operate independently from a global, you know, construction. And so Trump's come along and if he, and I, you know, I'm always worried about what he's actually doing.
Yeah.
Certainly appears like he's sincere. And he's, he is in large measure disconnecting the United States from that global organism and allowing it to prosper, you know, the way, I mean, he's headed that direction. And I am, you know, very, for the first time in years, optimistic about how this might turn out.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the timber line bid. You'll have to put the price in because I don't have it.
$84,030.
See, perfect.
I'll second that.
Proper motion on the floor to accept the timber line bid in the amount of $84,030 for the Barton Road Improvement Project. Any discussion?
Perhaps we need to review our checklist and put a signature on her. I understand, but when the checklist goes, the checklist should go with the bid and have that on there so that are all signatures.
Yeah, that's the first one I've ever opened. I didn't even think the signature paper was there.
But the understanding was even if we did, what's on there, we couldn't have had.
Yeah, wouldn't have mattered.
So I think that's part of the bid process that we're putting in.
Maybe a footnote, make sure all documents are signed for the bidders.
Or initials or something else.
Let's just review our checklist.
Yeah. It makes me feel bad because even though it's not my fault, but I didn't see the.
They couldn't decide this that day anyway. Because the package was sealed, once it's open, they can't adjust it and do anything with it.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of accepting Timberline's bid amount, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Would you reach out to them as soon as possible to see if they are available to still do?
We'll just let Jimmy know.
Yes. Mr. Dunford, you're out of.
Hey, Rick.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
This is my triennial report, one of the great night videos.
That's a three-word syllable.
Throw them around right up there with the judge.
Freaking.
A three-syllable word.
Yeah. The P&amp;Z has been kind of off and on doing the usual kinds of things, but what we're seeing is that lately, everybody that comes in is an exemption. I mean, right away, we go with the exemption. So then all of a sudden, they may show up across a hallway with a document, and of course, it's not. So then we have to go through that whole process. Mr. Streeter, our, one of our other board members, made the comment at our last board meeting that if it's exempt, why are we even having a meeting? It's an interesting question. As you look at all the rules and regulations, there's obviously rules and regulations for an exemption. And one of the problems is that if you don't ever let anybody know about it, the ownership can get all screwed up. If you don't report that you built the house, you divided the land, you built the house, and then all of a sudden, 10 years later, the county shows up for some reason, screwing all this property that was never flipped. So it screws up the tax process and the flow of that. And then adjacent to that, the other problem is that a first fee by statute, when you find. fine folks are supposed to fill in, and the, we were in a situation, as you know, we've only got three board members, and one of our board members missed a couple meetings, and we continued to conduct business, and when he came back, he objected to the whole process. We had to read because he felt that, because we didn't have a quorum, but we showed up, of course, we're trying to make things work for the people who are coming in before us, keep putting them off. We had to, made the issue that we needed to redo the whole process again, for the votes to approve, go back and do all that sort of thing, so, you know, we're sort of in a quandary about what to do about that, not having a quorum, getting one of you guys to show up to fill in for us, I mean, it's, years ago, we had a couple of times that that actually happened, what didn't seem like a big deal, but of course, I mean, it's the scheduling and everybody's busy and that sort of thing, so the other thing is, in the, in the, in the rules and regulations for exemptions, we asked for a plat, you know, survey. Well, technically, it's not in there, but again, they show up across the aisle, no documentation at all, and, and the big issue, the second big issue constantly is access. State statute says you cannot sell a piece of ground in isolation, you have to have deemed public access to that piece of property. Yesterday, a lady called me, there's a trust that's being divided up, two forty-acre pieces, said he want to go four twins. Family, family, no money involved, exemption. Fourth piece apparently is in the back, and they're having to negotiate, but she literally told us nineteen different relatives now to try to provide that access to the back, and I told her, "It's not going to work unless you have public access to that fourth lot." The others are all from the Unbeaten Creek Road, you may even know about this, but, so that's not an issue for that fourth one, so that's, again, constantly a problem, and we have one right now. I won't use the people's name, but they brought us a plat, the lots are divided out, and that new lot that they hived out is way back up in the corner. Well, there's all these streetbed plots, and there's a creek or something wandering through it, where's the access? It's not on the plat. Well, the family's going to get it to us. They've actually written it up, but it doesn't show on the plat, again, so we asked for, to show on the plat. It's not that hard, it's on the computer with the surveyors, you know, you just throw it in. So far, they failed to do that, so what are we supposed to do? And, you know, those are the kinds of crazy things that come up in front of P&amp;Z, and I'm not sure what your life's running at this point, but that's, some of the issues that we're having with, especially with the exemptions, the single splits and that sort of thing, I've been following right through, we haven't had any issues, so I don't think that's a, think that's a true statement, though? Yeah, it's, it's just constantly, across the street, they'll, they'll say, "Where, where this guy?" "Oh, and there's another one, just heard another divorce." The wrong people ended up in the divorce with the house, and now they're going to have to go back and figure all that stuff out that they thought was okay, and just, people don't want to think, and they, and they think there's a bunch of fees involved, that's the other one, or I don't want to picture that, it's just, we don't charge for an exemption, right there? Yeah, there's no charge for an exemption, you just fill out the form.
Well, they'll have to record all their stuff.
Right, they gotta record the stuff, but that's not like the hundred and twenty-dollar fee that we start with for a single split or minor subdivision or whatever. What keeps the, this twenty-acre thing from being a minor subdivision, because it's becoming four lots, two to four? Well, again, family to family, no money involved, it's a trust that's being broken apart, so I made the call yesterday that it's probably a family, an exemption, but with all the stuff, so, anyway, just some of the issues that we've been facing.
Is that board, state statutorily required to C5?
Yes, that's what we're, I'm not sure if it's statutorily required, but that's the way it's currently.
The buyer laws are set.
Yeah.
I wonder if it would be better to change that to a three-person board, potentially, to buyer law.
We have to look at it, but I think it is fine.
It may be statutory.
I'm on a computer looking up. I think it is fine.
One of the other issues is, go ahead.
I just, I just have a hard time thinking that there, that there'd be an argument if there, if there's three people on the board and that's all on the board, that, I mean, the necessity of getting things accomplished, when one of them doesn't attend a meeting, I mean, not bashing them, I just.
Yeah, well, what happens?
I mean, yeah, I mean, you're running on a board of three, do you not conduct business at that juncture?
Well, that's just it, I mean, people have worked hard, they've paid consultants and surveyors and everybody else, they show up for a meeting, and you sit there and say, "We don't have a quorum," because some of them are out of state.
Which will frustrate them.
Yeah.
Very much.
Yeah, but so it's, it's not just inconvenient, it's, it doesn't help me to say it's rude, but in fact, it, it's our government, number one, not like doing its job and looking good and taking care of business like it's presented to us, yeah, so.
Well, I would, I would suggest you put some of our numbers on them, on your list, and call it. Call us, and I don't, I'm not, you are going to run into the fact that we can't just pick everything up.
Right.
But, but there are times that, you know, I've watched the seventeenth time of how America makes some kind of food and I'm done with it, so you're welcome to call me.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I may be in, in sweatpants and flip-flop, well, you'll never see me in flip-flops, so that's an exaggeration, but I'd be willing to, to, yeah, there you go.
And maybe that's the best option, is if you have all our cell numbers, one of us very likely could.
Well, we, we think, as the lights now, we assumed certain individuals going to be here, and never had a clue. One time, the individual built an apartment a lot, I was going to hear him, and then drove off, didn't remember the reason, so, you know, just some of those little things that happen, it goes well, yeah, so.
You know, I, I really find it hard to believe that people want to do these splits, don't want to record that easement, you know, the access, it's like, the trouble they cause us down the road when relatives start dying, you know?
Yeah.
Our wasted, we could look at a section of land, it's certainly perfect, everything, we walked away because there's too many dead relatives, it's going to take a hundred years to clean title.
Yeah, well, that's exactly what you say, that's nineteen different cousins and stuff to get that access to that back lot.
You know, that's where it goes when they don't do stuff right the first time, it just sweeps it under the rug.
And I think, I think the state statute itself is a little light, I mean, somebody, this is, I think, what, that seventies? I think the statutes, we're currently in a little basic minimum, the only thing we've added to them is the PUD, because of the law and all of this, but just basic minimums. Exemption really needs to state that a survey has to be prepared on, I think they just missed that, sort of like terminums with our family law, I mean.
But I believe that we can do that as a county.
We might be able to, but.
Because that's a rule that.
Yeah, we can, we can ask.
We can ask, and so, the thought process behind that, yes, we have to go through a public hearing, yes, we have to do all the procedures, you know, probably go through the Administrative Procedures Act, nonetheless, we can do that. I mean, we did it with PUD, it, it took us two years, but we did do it, but we could also do this, the similar thing of, of, of putting some sideboards on there.
Yeah.
Because you run into the other thing, is that the familiar split happens, and then they're, they go try to sell in two years, and you can't do that.
No, five, five years, yeah, we've run into that several times, or, oh, now we're subdivided, we just got this a year ago and we're going to redo it.
Well, and she, this guy specifically told me that one of her siblings is handicapped, and he's not wanting to keep the property, so he will be selling it within a year, but because they're not subdividing it, he can't live here because it's an exemption.
Boy, that's a stretch.
Yeah, see, that's, lots of little things. I think at the bare minimum, the exemptions need to contain a request for a survey and a plat to be presented.
Fair enough.
With all the standard stuff, I think that, that would be minimum. Several years ago, it has been, I think you guys might remember, I came to board and talked to you about the sphere of influence, the one line sphere of influence, and the fact that we thought, and I had talked to Marty about this for, for several, but it had been revoked. Remember, I told you that the Crete County Attorney at the time said that, in his opinion, it wasn't, that if you didn't have zoning in the county, that the sphere of influence was still in play. I asked at that time, or our county attorney, for an opinion on it. Years later, we still haven't, I'm not trying to get anybody in trouble, but it didn't seem like a terrible request to find out.
Yeah.
To find out. And just a phone call to Crete County Attorney, say, "What's the basis for your comment?"
Get houses tuned in, it's gonna be a good ask.
Okay, yeah.
Right, you guys say?
Yeah.
Michael.
Yeah.
Several years ago, two, three years ago now, I asked for your opinion on the sphere of influence within the city limits that they're able to exercise. The attorney north of us on this, Creken, had said that the, that sphere of influence was still in place if the county had no zoning, and I had asked, have you clarified that, if in fact, because it's been repealed, we think it's been repealed, but according to him, the zoning issue creates the sphere of influence again, and I'd like to see if that's a clarification.
Who'd you talk to up there?
I didn't, it came through, I think it came through Mr. Griscoe, Senator Griscoe, who, he was doing his water thing, and just up the road here. That was a fair amount of hoo-rah going on with that, the guy from Colorado, and that's who, that's who, that's who said, he, he talked to his guy up there, that's who, yeah, Marty remembers it coming through, so, we still would like an opinion whether or not the sphere of influence is in play if the county has no zoning, and of course, that's us, we have no zoning whatsoever. It would be appreciated.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
I, I think to help work out, I think we need to clarify the five to three, because that's definitely a problem.
Yeah, it is.
If it says five, we don't have five, then we need to, if we can change that, we should change that, because it does put you in a, in a bad spot.
It's been that way for, we've had every three, four instances where that's happened, you know?
So, what if it's in statute or if it's just somewhere by law?
And personally, it's, this is one of those things after, let me see, I have been on P&amp;Z's now for about thirty, forty years, and seen pretty much most of it all come through the door, but, but one thing that continues to just bump me, and I admit it's a personal thing, it's the fact that so many times, surprising number of times where people have very important projects up in front of the board that don't show up, it's just, there's paperwork, we gave it to you three weeks ago, and I will tell you, and there has never been a time, probably like me, that there's not been a question. So what happens? You don't get the question resolved, come back next time, "What?" And you, and you start to get a little of that, and that's happened consistently on, in those, all those years, you're not there, so I would, there's no, I don't think there's any way to force it, but unless you put it in the statute, with the applicant and her representative, and his or her representative needs to show up for the hearing, just, Marty?
eighteen-five, two-oh-two, page eight. Each board of county commissioners shall, by resolution, create and establish a planning and zoning commission. The commission shall be composed of five members appointed by the board, at least three of whom shall reside in the unincorporated areas of the county, provided that this provision shall not affect the membership composition of any existing commission.
Well, that, that does say, we can have somebody on the board from Newcastle, up in, because right now, all three of us that are on the board are unincorporated. And the thing with, and the thing with the sphere of influence, it may sound, but if we have something that comes within the model, like the guy that did the stuff behind Frontier, the park guy, his mailing notices were, I think, four hundred dollars, because so many landlords have covered Frontier subdivision, basically, but anyway, it's important to the city to know that there's somebody going to do something right within that model, so we've done that, when we used, when it was enforced, when we thought, we'd give a letter to the towns, or the entity that was involved, and say, "You have this project," and we would require on our own, two sets of documents, one to be presented to the town, one to be presented to us, and we, that's how we were doing.
Statute continues.
Oh, please continue.
The board of county commissioners shall designate the county clerk, another county employee, or a member of the planning and zoning commission to serve as secretary as a commission. Have we done that as a board?
Yeah.
Carol, Carol is our secretary.
So we did that as a board?
I don't know, I think we voted up, we just, she just took the duties on when.
It was used to be Fran, and then Fran.
It was Rick Kuchko.
So in the meantime, I guess, I think we could provide, we could right now, a list of all of our cell phone numbers.
Yeah.
And that way you can move forward if you need to and start calling, and tell somebody else puts in their.
I know, we're suffering greatly, holding embarrassment when we don't have a quorum, like, we do show up, like I said, in some, the airport thing, I put four quorums, we fly in and we had to, couldn't do anything, so, just as a for instance.
Or, remember this board, you can sit on that board right?
Mm-hmm.
So, if anyone's interested.
Lots typically with us, where we would say, you're, Andy Rossman, one of your founder, like, Matt's father, one of the, he asked to pay on two, he paid the two of our meetings and years ago, and filled in for him, it was just fine, so, yeah. But those are some of the issues.
Thank you, Rick, I appreciate it.
And you're the person.
Thanks for that, Dave.
We'll get you back with an email or whatever.
Okay, that sounds fine, and I would, I'm going to do the same thing, I'm going to go scare the up and board, and I'll go to town maybe to, I've done this before, the last, the first up and board I went to, who are you, where are you from?
Yeah.
We've never seen a planning, a planning person before.
Yeah.
So, I'll go to both, both entities, keep them appraised on what's going on, and I'll tell them that this was something, this thing.
Clarification.
Yeah, because that's, that is the important thing.
Very good. Anything else, you're very welcome. Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure.
All right, board signature on the resolution twenty-five dash eleven.
Hi. So this is the one that you guys are going to have to figure out what account to come out of, because we are out of money on financial assessment. Between these four line items, it's a total of thirteen thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. I did look in the emergency reach count, there's seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's one that I brought up.
What?
This is about the account that, a couple weeks ago, we were discussing this, that's how we know, you know, something.
We don't have wiring to that, there's no wiring.
Oh, sorry, and, uh, you're, perfect.
You're scary, man.
What?
You're scary, man. Why, you.
Well, we saw you do it the other way. We should do it the other way.
It shows in your printout, there's money in the financial asset, but there's lots. That's what that other resolution just came up with. The emergency reach count is one hundred point zero, zero point twenty, point zero, one,
No, I got it. We have a thirteen, we have thirteen, we got a paper that's thirteen.
I think there might be money in the tribal stuff. I'd, I'd shoot. Like, see that stuff going on.
Then I don't have a problem with that. Except that I want to underline the fact that it's not just a bank to extend.
Yeah, I know. That's a one-shot opportunity that.
That's it.
We're spending it on things that we need to operate, unfortunately.
The idea was it would be a permit, you know, you're paid for something permanent. This kid, crazy. Ninety percent of our resolutions are off budget, just crazy. We've got to figure something out.
There's no stipulation on that. That's because when you're out of money, it's an emergency, right?
Which, so is the emergency.
Yes, I'm okay with you, but.
Okay. I guess we wipe out the emergency and work on a budget to do something.
I'll do emergency. But that's what's in the paper, right?
You can approve it, and then when I, after one, I'll have it ready for you, I just leave it, except I've got an actual county that I'm doing on.
Well, because you have to change it. The tribe.
I know, I think we, we could go ahead and call the emergency then. I do think those tribal, that money needs to go.
So, we'll, we'll discuss that in budget, where we're doing it.
So, the motion, we entertain a motion for resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven, amendment to the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Oh. How much?
Looks like.
Thirteen, twelve, sixteen.
It'll be a twelve, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty cents.
Thirteen thousand, seven fifty-six, sixteen, out of one hundred dot, zero, zero, dot, two, zero, dot, zero, one, zero, two, zero, 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 dot, zero, 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 zero. And adding it into general law enforcement, for the prisoners.
No, there's four different accounts.
Oh, there is, isn't there? So, allowing that amount, again, also into law enforcement, jail, medical, and general law enforcement utilities. And general law enforcement vehicle notice. Splitting those funds off that. Some of the terrible motion. Any further discussion on this one?
In our budget process, I'd like to pull all the vouchers, so we can make a better decision for next year's budget, please. And those accounts, so that we can make a better decision. It's all I ask.
All those favor, those motions on the table, please say.
Do you make the motion, who?
I'm ready. Here, pardon me. All of the favor, the motion on the table, please say.
All right. But you're gonna be on the hot seat. So, I will put electricity. You've never been there before.
Never. I'm not even once.
Discuss that, or, you just have to add it up, or you're just gonna add it up?
Oh, as far as the, the report, yeah. That is, actually, that's what we're, yeah. I discussed with Tim during the last meeting, during that meeting, and that was, that is, that amount is covered under the grant. That isn't the responsibility of the towns.
So, did you think that the county shouldn't sign it, or it needed to be worded differently?
I think it needs to be made clear that the funding's from that grant, in that you're not on the hook, or at least the money's already there before.
Because the way it reads, the county is on the hook.
Yeah.
So, should I contact Powder River on that, or?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Either, either just have the money here, or make sure it's already there, or just change the language, making sure it's going, not grant, not your funding, or your funds that you have, not.
Yes, Marty.
Do we need to, does the county need to sign for the easement?
Well, this says that the county is sending a check for eighteen thousand dollars.
But there's a couple of documents that are better easier.
Yeah, but on here, it said that the check was enclosed, so maybe we need to get a check. We don't have, do we have that grant already?
I don't know. I don't know if we've received it. It's approved and in place, I don't know if we've received two months for that.
It's all I have, ten of that, because if it's part of that, then the county is gonna have to write that check.
Then yes, we can push them back. I don't wanna just.
I'll just call ten.
Yeah, that would give us a problem there.
There's a lot of stuff in here.
It comes. And Michael just wanted to make sure that the county wasn't signing, that the county's in charge of all of that.
Yeah. Well, mostly making sure that the money's gonna be there, so. Yeah.
But I don't wanna not sign it easily, if that's gonna cost us.
So, possibly make a motion, and your signature on it, help you just on the money being that?
I'd rather, I don't know.
Michael, Michael's looked at it.
I'm not comfortable with that.
I just wanna, need to have a better idea where the grant is, I guess.
I mean, it's. I mean, you're not, they're not using electricity in this juncture, anyway.
Yeah, just trying to stay there, again.
Yeah. I, I would assume in two weeks, we'd probably be okay. Everybody okay now? All right. MOU with Weston County Combined Communications Joint Power Board in Weston County. So, the discussion, or this started with, I think, started probably with the generator, right? So, I, I think some of the questions were, what happens when Newcastle kicks that on and is consuming power? Is there some sort of a way to break apart what the Joint Powers Board and the city of Newcastle is consuming in a situation like that? And is the county then on the hook for whatever Newcastle's consuming? I guess that's one of the biggest concerns.
Well, there's also the maintenance on it.
Yeah.
Down the road.
Well, it's open, it's open to the Joint Powers Board.
That, that will fall upon, well, I think upon them on their, I think that's what the MOU is gonna spell out, who is in charge of maintenance and that kind of stuff down the road.
It, it would be on Joint Powers.
Yeah.
Michael.
And I had a draft MOU done, but then Gilbert and I have been talking with the state, right?
Yeah.
There's a little wrinkle we need to work through. I need to look at the grant.
Yeah.
This just happened Friday, so.
Yeah.
The grant and the rules, just to make sure that we're all good all around, so. But I think the MOU had drafted up, had the Joint Powers Board maintaining it and all the expenses and everything, so. We just need to figure out ownership.
So, I think part of the discussion that, that we have had is that it has to go on our insurance rolls. And so, that's part of our, our interest too, is that anything happens, it comes on accounting interest rolls, uh, insurance rolls, instead of interest. I don't know. You know where I'm at.
Yeah.
Because it's, because I talked to Paul, and he said it's our county asset, unless the state doesn't feel that way anymore, because anytime anything's purchased with grant funds, it's all under our asset for five years, unless the state has changed that policy, and they need to let us know that, so that we can let our auditor know that, and we cannot have to insure that stuff anymore.
Right, so that could be put down.
And that would be awesome.
So, that's part of the MOU. So, equipment with certain price tags, you can do, I can say, we're gonna do this with it, or we're gonna do this with it. So, some things, and that, and things have changed over the last five years. So, with this, I would have to, and what I'm going to do, what I plan to do, is submit a letter to DHS saying the generator is going to be, going to Joint Powers Board, and they'll have sole responsibility for it. It will. Okay, so, who's going to insure? It'll be, everything will be on them. The Joint Powers Board will be their property, will not be the county's. So, does the Joint Powers Board have other property? Yeah, I mean, their equipment, they're, they're responsible for everything to do with that generator, once I get this letter and submit it to DHS and they approve it.
What about the?
Till then, it's ours.
What about the motorable equipment we bought?
Right now, the motor for Joint Powers Board?
That, what, county equipment?
That, if I remember right, that, that dispatch equipment is owned by the Joint Powers Board right now.
Correct.
Joint Powers Board is in charge of maintenance on it. Should the Joint Powers Board dissolve tomorrow?
It goes back to the.
Gets sold, and gets spread back out to the entities that.
That bought it.
The buyers.
Correct.
So, say eighty percent was one side, twenty percent was the other side, the purchase price, it will get sold, the assets will be sold, eighty percent go to the one entity, twenty to the other. And that's when, I assume that generator will be the same way. It becomes Joint Powers Board property. They're in charge of ensuring, maintaining, everything. If it goes away tomorrow, if it's sold, whichever entity put up whatever percentage to buy it, that's where it goes to.
And any fuel used by that generator, the Joint Powers Board should have to pay for that fuel.
Do you have that, do you guys have some sort of an agreement with the, the city on that? I mean.
I haven't even talked to the city about it, because it's the Joint Powers Board that the grant was.
No, I get that, but that's a conversation that should probably happen, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, and what you're talking about, is that on paper somewhere, because I don't remember seeing that.
Yes, we, that was in the Joint Powers, that was all set up and done.
That wa, it was in the, the initial.
And, and I mentioned that last, last time, that anything that was bought, this generator, if it, if the Joint Powers Board fell through, that would come back to me, but, you know, and then after the recent conversations with the state since Friday, and this morning, you know, I gotta submit a letter to DHS for them to approve me giving it to the Joint Powers Board.
That was also, we had, there was a document right across in front of us, all that, on that Joint Powers, how it was formed, and all that, in that frame.
But there's a, all the entities that put their, their equipment into, it goes back to those if it does dissolve. And that is in that initial, I don't know.
So, then, instead of an MOU, can this be an addendum?
I don't know, because this is a separate transaction for a grant.
Yeah. And I'm gonna let, I'm gonna give a copy of that grant to Michael, and have him, you know, read it a little bit better, so.
I, I see it like an amendment on the end, you know, this, all this other stuff that's forementioned, the generators down here, this is amendment to this contractor, the MOU.
Just an addendum, just so we're all, that's what, you know, one way or the other, just to, so it's on.
And they're keeping on, I assume, you may not know, but Dave Larson was probably in charge of keeping a roll of what's coming in and what property it is.
I would assume that there shouldn't be that, but we all know how assumptions go. I will have to check with the city to make sure that that is getting tracked over there to our.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. EMS district, we need to probably discuss another opportunity for public meeting. We wanna schedule one today, like, shoot one out there a month from now, or?
Shoot one out there.
That way, with stamp opportunity to, and I think maybe both Upton and Newcastle again. Everybody think that's all right with that?
Last one, staying back on, it's Upton's downtown meeting. I think it'd be better if I just stand along.
I would like that, too.
So, what's my, today, it's twenty, twenty. I'm probably gonna be hanging, but if it's in the evening, I can try, do whatever a month from now, or.
What day of the week did we have the last one on? What day of the week did we have the last one on?
Monday, the actual Harry.
Are we talking about the town council meeting or the one we did at the...
At Upton, what day of the week was that?
It was a Tuesday.
The one we had at Fairgrounds.
That was on a Monday.
On Monday?
Yeah, cause it was the night before the convention.
Yes.
Whatever the, if I hear the board, I'll make it work.
June sixteenth, we have our second meeting in June.
Might be an order, so you might have to make it work. I don't know.
We'll make it work.
Okay.
It's a big state.
I mean, it's just...
Another one. Like, any more?
Um, that works, yeah. Let's do that, you want that to be that tomorrow? And then, do you wanna do... The following two weeks later, you want back here in Newcastle, like the day before, or do you wanna do it the following week?
Well, it don't matter, rest of the board.
Then gets into the July fourth week, and then we can kind of ask.
It's getting pretty swampy around here, yeah. If we did it the June thirtieth, that's the day of...
Day of our first meeting in July.
Yeah.
Are you, so...
Just pull the trigger.
Just gonna have to verify that the community center's available in Upton. Nothing else is going on that night. If there is, we might have to ask to do something.
Well, if it is, we can have it out at one more call.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go.
Alright. And then, when you pass one on June thirtieth?
Same place. If the fairgrounds is upset to it. Newsletter journal investment.
Oh, wait, 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 you skipped conflict of interest form.
Oh, sorry. I didn't wanna word our conflict of interest form, is there something, I'm assuming there's something we can, you can go out on the internet and...
Could I ask the town of Upton to see what they have?
Do you guys do one?
Like, are we just... State audit, like when they come in and talk about conflict of interest?
Yeah, what you sign at the beginning of the year?
Yeah, yeah, we have to...
Okay, I don't think it has to be very dramatic, but we'll have some time.
I think that was the discussion, is, I'd like to see it, because how far does this go? I mean, we're a small community, small counties. We got general, oh, I don't, I'm trying to do that. You know, lots of generations.
Yeah, I know.
Roads named after our families.
Yeah, and Paul pointed that out, you know, I live up down the county road that gets maintained, so I, you know, there could be a point where...
What? There's a county road named Urban that I don't know.
Yeah. Alright, thanks, thank you for doing that. Newsletter journal, Suzie, can you meet Suzie? So now, an email, looking for some questions on these investments tonight. I thought we talked about most of them at the last meeting, but we just do a quick recap. One of the questions was...
Send it in a minute.
Okay, so we're gonna answer both of these first ones on there. How much money can be accessed by the county at this time, what's the timeframe on access for the others? So... At this time, they're locked up in some CDs and, or, aren't those the ones that pinnacle in CDs until October?
So, Mr. Chairman, you can assess it, right?
Yeah, that's true, but you know...
You're gonna get penalty, but the fact of the matter is you can get money anytime.
I can answer them, all of them can be assessed. Number two.
It is.
Know why this information isn't included in the budget for the county, but the reserve accounts like county roads, if you'll do a period.
It is in the... State statute, well, constitution, we have to have a balanced budget, so we have to include it. Now, the interesting thing is that when she sends us a treasurer's report, it does have the other districts on it, those aren't ours. So, we're not gonna report on anything that is a special district, even though our treasurer's report has it, but they're not ours.
A budget report would she potentially be looking at, or they potentially be looking at, or they're not seeing it?
I would say they're probably just looking at the budget, and then you see that, that report, and it's probably just, there's not an ability to...
Well, it's in the cash reserve, why not?
It's in the cash reserve, or it's, well, the county road fund is in the county road reserve. So what happens is she's got that money lumped in her report and we split it out in our budget. And I think that's what we were asking about two weeks ago, where's this, where's this, where's this?
A different line item for it, just to mark clear. Is the info readily available to the public? I believe that answer is yes.
This is.
So.
Your budget plus.
Yeah. How does the county determine what money gets funneled into reserves and how?
Through the budget process.
Yeah.
That's what we do, we make a motion when, when, well, when we approve our budget. If in that deliberations, we've decided that we're going to put three hundred thousand into depreciation count, that is part of our deliberation.
And the thought process on those, or sometimes for county blades? Yeah, so, I mean, I don't wanna be too extremely vague on this, but I think that's a good definition. If there's excess, we try to channel it into areas that it can be accessible, that's not... Some of those funds can't be accessed for certain things, like county road funds, they're designated just only for projects.
The last two steps.
Yeah. How does the county determine what money, oh, sorry, is there a standard goal the county has for the amount invested? Uh, depends on who's running the books at the time. You said Paul, that's one of two years of reserves of operation for the county and you've... Probably what we have right now is sixty-eight months in reserves for county operation.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's just the goal of the board. And I think what we were asking is what, this last time, the question was on the investments, what kind of return were you getting, and she brought it up.
So, then, number six is, in what situation would that money be utilized? Some of it depends on what it's earmarked for, stretched early, county roads, gravel, whatever. Some of the others would be...
County operation.
Yeah, county operation, in the event that the world falls apart.
Well, the two words, "that money",
Yeah.
is, is not a qualifier.
Yeah.
And so, there are some, there are some situations where that money goes in that account.
I'm good with that, I mean, Suzie needs to. I'll talk to her and she can email it.
Well, we can talk about it again.
The paper may have already, I don't know when they run their stories, but tomorrow.
Well, they're going to press today.
Well, and I think the interesting thing is, is budget workshops or budget meetings are open to the public, just as these are, and I understand it's daytime and all that, but we do have... Oh, YouTube that can be watched, those questions can be...
Okay. Anything else on investment stuff? New business camera quote update?
So I visited with Charles about the cameras, and Suzie's office in my office, and he can tie two in for forty-four hundred dollars, and we do still have money in the courthouse security. You guys had asked for me to help from that project.
Is that a plan, courthouse security?
No, it's not. I don't know what you did last couple of years.
I don't think any money has been spent on it. It's so very small now.
You have some, what's your office, you're very well covered?
Uh, so, oh, you were not at the, so, there's been a couple incidents in Suzie's office, and Gilbert had tried to look at the current camera, and it can't be seen because the back is to the door, the... And so, it needs to be on the other side.
So we see actually the dash doors and...
The, so you can see the counter down there.
Nothing major, but...
No.
Enough that it's worrisome, and down the road is not more worrisome. To find out that you can't...
You can't prosecute it if you don't know.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it'd be on the system where it can be recorded and backed up, but...
The best other option I found, you asked me to look at, was a ring system, which would, you'd be paying for a plan, a year, a year of plan, and the cameras would cost you, you know, fifty bucks. I think I emailed Becky when I found Suzie.
Oh, I did. So there's twenty-six thousand in courthouse security, and that hasn't been any spent on.
I think the best option is what?
Mr. Chairman, I do too, only because of the ability to knock it off or to do something, shut it off.
You have better retention.
Right.
And stuff like that, so.
This is an interesting thing that could be thought out, thought through, with these numbers.
I have some questions. Is the county attorney's office, not the annex building, included in that courthouse, or is that something that'll be separate?
I think you...
Cause there's no cameras or security down there at all.
Can I get my personal opinion? I think you should get it, true.
I do too, we've had to lock down the lawn horse and come several times.
I think the annex should have security cameras.
Yeah.
Is it someone coming in, delusion, kinda stuff, is that what's going on?
Well, the instances were in, were my office, my office is within the county attorney's office. I run the domestic violence, sexual assault program, and I've had a couple offenders come in trying to get into my office. And then, I don't know about instances with potential people with crimes or whatnot, but there's been some hostile moments, I would say, at least.
Brooke has raised concerns about people coming in in the past before too, so.
Well, I think it's someone we need to get out here next month or two, when we start doing budget, and see where we're at. I get it, I don't...
Ricotta, I can have Ricotta do it, get a quote on camera, I think they're our best option.
I don't know what we're gonna have, kinda money that we have to dump into the jail.
I don't, I don't think it'll cost that, that kinda money for them, but...
Or even just panic buttons or something, if you can't afford the cameras, panic buttons, but I know a lot of us have these.
On your board.
Make motion to, to fifty-four, four thousand four hundred dollars from courthouse security to, because the cameras are in two offices, never courthouse.
It's, new cameras not, is it replaced or?
Yeah, new cameras.
Oh, sorry.
Be good with that, eh? Discussion.
I, I don't think we should forget the annex, the word annex means it's part of the courthouse, essentially, and so we should look at doing something there, whether it's panic buttons or our cameras.
Yeah, you do whatever.
When we did the jail camera system, we did get quotes and everything for all the audits and everything else, so we did have Alpha and Plank the opportunity to read. We did do, do all the...
Yeah, I might get asked and see where that was at. Alright, hang on, discussion on the motion. If it wasn't figured, please say aye.
Aye.
That was... Alright. Sir, I asked you...
Mr. Chairman, this, um, Mr. Busco came in here, contacted me, I didn't call him back, cause I usually have a Oregon number, and he would've thought I was trying to sell him a warranty. But he had the grace to come in here to talk about, my question was, is I, I've been gone for a couple of years, and going back through the minutes, the idea wasn't in five years that we would review, just look and see what was going on, and to have updates, I think the minutes even say quarterly updates. And so, what my discussion, when I had it on there, is that we look, to question this board, has that happened and what's going on, and fill me in, so I know where we're at.
The new store, this is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootlegger's liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime, is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnut. It's amazing what this area has done, totally amazing.
So what my discussion, when I had it on there, is that we look, to question this board, has that happened and what's going on, and fill me in, so I know where we're at. And you had the grace to, to say you would come in, so if, if we could allow him to have a moment, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, I think that's fine, I don't know that it has happened last year, year and a half, but, and this also partially stemmed from an upgrade, right, in the building?
I believe we, there was an upgrade that the county paid for, was there an upgrade of, of water system or something?
Yeah.
I think it was a drain.
Okay, I think it was just...
Rescue account.
It was, yeah, it was out of the search and rescue account, right? I don't think we had anything other than what's going on, what's the updates, where are we?
So, just looking at it, I guess I didn't, I reviewed the contract and I did not see the five-year review in the contract, but maybe somebody's got a different contract than I, but anyway, we're at four years.
Okay.
And so far, the front forty foot of the building has been totally remodeled inside.
Can you give us like an update of what has happened, electrical?
Um, yeah, so, so the building was never electrical to code, had no ground. Has never been grounded, it's a two-wire system throughout. So, we did, we did ground the panel coming into the building, the panel, no, I'm sorry, not the paneling to the building, but the system is grounded now. So, the electrical in the front section is, is literally coked now, but our feed is still coming in the backside. So that, there's still work to be done, the whole, the whole back sixty feet is basically still just a garage. The only thing we've done back there is added the garage door in the back and took the... The only thing we've done back there is added the garage door in the back and took those sliders off. Had a little dirt, dirt work done outside. So basically, it's just, it's just been remodeled. We've got, I just, we were just looking and about $34,000 in material. It is what we've so far invested. That's, that's pretty rough. Labor, I don't even know what to tell you, doubled or tripled that, yeah. So that's where it's at right now. Still in, still continuous work in progress. I mean, we jumped the gun by two weeks here. The open house is on the 30th. So you're, I'm sure all got invites if you haven't seen them. So that, that'll be an opportunity for you to all come and look and see what's, what's been done.
That's awesome. Yeah, it just was in the minutes that, that I remember the fair board had, you know, week, because there was a concern about the 15 years, which I believe it says.
Yep.
I haven't seen it, so I don't know. But that there was a concern with public and with the, with the board at that time of just having a review of five years. So I probably jumped the gun. I just wanted to have that conversation of what's going on, fill me in, let me know, where are we? I think you've done wonderful things. I have no doubt of that because it was a dilapidated old building. And it was a good contract.
We have a, we've been, we've had to, you know, whatever was uncovered in fair, we've had parties, trainings. I mean, we've opened it up to, to allow other activities in there. So it's been used quite a bit and it's more coming. And DOT is doing the child safety, child seat safety class in August. I think American Legion's got it released for next month.
Cool.
So it's, it's been used for multiple things besides just us to.
So I guess that was probably what, when the agreement was, that a quarterly report of what's going on, just so the taxpayers and everybody knows that, you know, it's, it's being utilized, it's upkeep. The upkeep is, is there. It's a wonderful thing to have, the search and rescue. I think we all have been through that. So, but I really appreciate you coming in.
Okay.
And that was my curiosity. I just wanted some word to fill me in. You did it. So thank you very much and don't forget to.
Want to see them with the?
That's exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very, very much. And do you want a copy of the, of the minutes we resolved? Were you, were you cool?
Yeah, I'm cool.
Well, I knew you were cool. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Greaves Road.
As with a lot of our county roads, the moisture is a good thing in some ways and it's, it's tough on county roads that don't have moisture. I talked to a couple individuals, Mr. Greaves, and one of them was last week on, on portions. They admitted to you, there's, there's sections that are worse than others, but impassable in some spots. And Chuck mentioned ambulance was coming down one day or.
Yeah, last, last week there, ambulance, I met the ambulance, Joe Whitney broke his leg. Luckily it wasn't life threatening. I met the ambulance and they were only going 30 at the most. I mean, they've been blading on the road. There's, and it's not the blade operators, there just isn't any gravel out there. They're just pulling up sand. And it's just, of course, they tried to crown it and stuff. And it, a lot like driving in goddamn snow. It would grab you. After this moisture, it's not bad, but it's gonna get bad with all the, the heavy truck traffic that we have out there. I know in years past, they put up counters at the highway. But what happens is the oil field truck comes in, he crosses that counter one time, and then he makes multiple trips up and down the county road and never goes back out on the highway. So he'd only get, he'd making 10 trips up and down the county road, but only getting countered once. There needs to be counters, if you guys are going to put counters, need to be counters on down the county road at the pump station to catch the internal traffic that's down there. Another thing, a lot of Niobrara's traffic's going through there, heavy trucks. They come down Bruce Road and then the Cheyenne River Road across, I guess, it's, yeah, it's Cheyenne River. I still call it the washboard. But, I mean, they're, I don't know if you can talk to Niobrara or get taxes up. I mean, because they're tearing the shit out of our roads to get down there. And the thing is, Bruce Road, Greaves Road, I don't know, couldn't tell you the figures, but I bet you most of the, the taxes are off those two roads that come to the counter. I don't know. I mean, y'all be able to tell me that?
Yeah, you're not, I mean, rocks and roads, the same thing, Niobrara County, Oilfield, Lynch Road. I mean, and Jimmy did say something about 10 miles on that Greaves Road probably needed gravel. And I think that's. Kind of in the works.
I'm, I'm not a dirt man, but to me, with this moisture, what they need to do, they need to go in there, they need to drop those rippers and get down eight to 12 inches. And I bet you could pull a lot of gravel back up, get underneath that washboard and relay it. I mean, maybe save hauling some gravel if you just rip it up and, and relay it.
There was a comment mentioned also about narrowing up that road in sections that probably got widened up.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, it's, it's super wide. I mean, but the thing is too, the goddamn trucks, they take their half out of the middle. So there's times that you did, you like that it's a little wide so that you can get out of their way.
Yeah, Jimmy's advertising right now for some help with some trucking for, on the county side of it, to try to start getting some gravel out. You're, we've got about six real problems in the county right now. I think it's $30,000 a mile right now just for the gravel, so.
Well, what would it cost for fuel to rip everything up and see if you could bring some gravel up? Would it be less than $30,000?
If you try it on a truck, I could mention it to Jimmy, I mean.
I'd be very careful. We got up on the wall, pretty clear some spots. Was good. Now there's black earth coming up. We've already been through our, the gravel that's on top, so there might not be as much gravel as one thing there.
But when did they do it? About 15, 18 years ago that they, they redid that whole thing? They put a, they, I don't know how many, all it was hauling gravel for?
Three, four inch cap or something?
It was huge. I bet you it's about a 10 or 12 inch cap on it.
I do, Mr. Chairman. We did discuss it with Jimmy to go find, there's no longer that one grant that allowed for that road to happen like that, like it did 15 years. That grant is no longer available.
Yeah.
And that was in industrial road project. And that's why they had the counters. So really, I'm not sure, we'd have to find out what grant would need the counters now. But that's what the counters were for. But we have asked him to go search and he's doing a pretty good job. And we would help in any way to go to the slip and, and try to get some, some funding for whatever. Because we know it's expensive and it needs to be rebuilt.
But like, I don't know, $30,000 a mile for new gravel. I mean, I'd like to see, try half a mile, see if you can rip it up and then figure out your cost. I mean, with your time and, and labor and fuel and everything like that, see if it's cheaper to just rip it up.
Yeah, I'll visit with Jimmy a little bit. He's not, I mean, he's usually not opposed to trying stuff here, holding shoulders for a mile or, you know, doing this or that here and there to try to see if he can save some of it, so. I know, you're.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, and, but the thing, there's a, I haven't seen it, Shane Sweet saw, there's a dang truck out there, I think, I think he said it's got 14 axles on it. So, I mean.
Yeah. On heavy stuff, yeah.
Yeah. But it's, like I said, it's all the, all the internal traffic. The truck comes in off the highway, those crew trucks, they've got, what, four, eight? Or two, yeah, four, eight. They got about 12, 12 axles. They come in one in the morning, they go to the well, they go to pump stations, go to well, pump station, and they're all up and down that road. And then in the evening, they go out. But yet they've made six to 10 trips up and down the county road, internal, and never made it to the highway.
Do you know whose trucks they're?
Pardon?
Do you know whose trucks they're?
In, in caves. In Prairie. Prairie out of Casper and, well, then a lot of Gillette Kissicks. Kissicks always out there. And then I know, last year I had a heifer calf get killed by arena that was hauling down there into Niobrara County. They killed a, killed a calf for it. And luckily I caught him or else I wouldn't, I mean.
No cameras out there?
No cameras.
And we're not putting him out there?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just made a.
But I, I mean, I know money's tight near a hang like that, but also that, the Bruce Road, Greaves Road, those roads out there produce a lot of money for the county too.
Yeah, I agree. I think other roads that don't have traffic on, or don't have oil on them and people, 100 people now live up and down them and they're destroying.
Yeah, well, Jimmy said Painted Hills Road is as busy as Northern County, but it, it doesn't produce anything.
Yeah. Property tax, yeah. I'll mention it to Jimmy though, maybe try and short chunk that down there and see.
It, to get, I mean, like I said, to get underneath that washboard. I mean, just, and the thing is out there, Nathan, everybody out there drives a company vehicle. They could care less if it gets tore up. I drive a personal vehicle.
Understand, for sure. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We can pass. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can pass.
So, this is someone that's.
Troy Lynch would like to be reappointed to the Weeden Best Patrol District.
So they brought him up the last meeting, he did not have that one in with the other three.
You know, when check all signatures for authenticity?
I'm gonna read them.
Guess it's up to me then.
I was trying to read them.
Sure, even their addresses are good. Mr. Chairman, I move that we reappoint Troy Lynch to the Wisconsin County Weeden Best Patrol District.
You're going to shoot properly second, I'm going to forward to the reappointment. Mr. Lynch to the Weeden Best Board, any discussion?
Thank you for your service.
Yes. If you're not always in favor, please say aye. Any public comment?
I got one real quick.
Sure.
My name's Kaylee Gull, for the annex building for New York. I spoke with Commissioner Todd in regards to the grant management assistance program. So I just brought the F L case about them, look at it. I'll show you the spiel. There's going to be the new line that has writing on it.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks guys, have a good day.
Thank you for sitting in. We, we love to have company.
What?
Write that down.
Pass now. I had someone and I can't remember what it was.
She has issues.
Bless you!
I can come back to you here.
You wanted to come back to me too. Yeah, it's just gone over.
They just said nothing.
Roads mostly, that's been kind of the topic for discussion with the moisture and stuff. And that's, the gravel gets pushed down and the dirt gets pulled up. If it stays dry, mostly discussed, but, but we're losing the tops on them. One section that was brought up was South Side of Dewey, East, over towards South Dakota. David Tisdale brought it to my attention. Between him and Philip Holmes, I figured somewhere between 40 and 45 years it's been since any gravel's been put on that section. I don't have anything to go off of, but it's been within that time. It'd be from the intersection east. But just going off of some of the things that people have been mentioning, I think the roads would get pretty rough with the mud. But if they're impassable, that's, I hate to see an ambulance get called and stuck in the mud and can't make it or something like that. I mean, we know what pole drives are and we use them in our, our county, but I hate to have something like that. You know, if we lost a light or something like that because something wasn't accessed or should have been by, by road, that would be kind of tough to solve. This something to consider.
Yeah, I think it's, I'm waiting here, I've been, these roads, they seem to be really fast during.
Yes, I do.
Way to fill the gap.
Okay, on May 9th, I was in Lander, testified in front of the Joint Corporations Election Public Subdivisions Committee. There was a group that's wanting, attacking, based on all the associations in Wyoming, saying it's unconstitutional for the associations to use taxpayer money to pay their dues. President, WCCA, Nancy Macker, Teton County testified. Terry Wolf from Waschke County testified, I testified. We basically all three covered different things, answered questions through the committee. I mean, we got a pretty good feeling from them, but they're supportive. But then we got the group behind us, after the mayor's municipality really attacked us. So this basically is going to be a series of battles being fought to get this done. But I mean, it's a winnable battle. It's just going, we're going to have to take the time to do it and suffer through all the attacks that are made on all these associations for that. In general, that's, that was what that, from that committee was about. The, we were very supportive to most of the people on the committee, but it's on this House side is where. Then to, we had a following week, Board of Directors meeting in DuBois. Basically, that was to go over the WCCA's budget and proposed dues. Give everybody a copy of what our. Give everybody their copy of what our proposed dues are. Our dues went down seven hundred and two dollars. So, pretty much staying sane over the course of the year. And then the next day was WCCA meeting in Lander on things. One of the big ones was property taxes. Brenda Henson from Director of Department of Revenue testified, now she's retiring. She did a very good job of explaining what the twenty-five percent reduction is gonna be, what the homeowners, the older homeowner, the boostin' was. Explaining that, Kara has nothing but my, most respect on trying to make heads or tails of all that's coming down. But they basically said there was bill out there that prioritized which ones could be downed first. So Kara's taking all care of all of that. Really good meeting on that. I mean, that was the biggest thing was on the, all the discussions, he'd be going around property tax. Legislature's recap, Senator Case, while he was giving his recap, he's getting emails about, and it's coming from the Americans Action Fund. The cost of getting emails, and basically Wyoming is under attack. It's, somebody clicks on a link, creates email. It comes from an address, legitimate address, everything. All these emails are coming from out of state. They're not even Wyoming citizens or residents that are supporting these groups that are attacking our state. So it's, it's gonna be a battle. They're very concerned about this year and next year, fight through it all. They're hoping in two years, the next election, the tides will turn, but it's, we're under attack from a lot of out of, out of state people that are just getting action groups by clicking on a link, getting action group support. They're not even here. That's kind of it in a nutshell. I had to bail on the second day because I had to be in two falls Friday night for graduation. So, yes, any questions?
So is that, is that, is that last one that you talked about management council headache concern that was brought up about transparency of emails of legislators? And part of the issue was that somebody was blocking a certain group from the legislators getting email. Is that part of that discussion? Because what was, what the comment was, was that every email does hit every legislator's box. It's just that it gets into spam, quarantine, or it gets actually on their inbox.
I, that is part of it, I think, you know, because they're getting all these emails, but they're not showing all these emails. Well, majorities are getting the group to junk and to spam because of where they're coming from. I mean, there's, I don't think there are anybody deleting or ignoring legitimate in-state emails or stuff that concerns our state. It's these groups that are rallying the troops and clicking on links and everybody's getting five hundred emails and they're all coming, they're all the same thing. It's the same form letter, but it's coming from five hundred different people. I mean, it's, it's, they're getting a form letter. When they click on that link, every legislator gets a form letter. Comes from a different address, but it's the same form letter. They're not even creative enough to write their own letter, is how they're going about some of this. Yeah. And on, which mentioned management council, most of the committees, management council recommend they go to only four days of meetings. Pretty much every committee chair is saying, no, we're gonna still stick with our six days of meetings.
But that's.
Management council, because if they go with the four days that the management council once in a while go to, those are gonna be a lot of very important topics get swept to the side and ignored in the interim. Any other questions about?
Just to state, the WCCA is exactly why you have your dues. You just learned about property tax at Ken. That's not the only topic they talked about. That just happens to be the one at this moment. So WCCA is the one that taught me about County Road Fund. They taught me about how the tax distribution happened. They taught me, I mean, Title Twenty-Five. So it's not limited to just being a lobbying group. It's a, it's actually an educational group.
All elaborate a little more. The, on the national level with Naco, there was one county made the newspaper about withdrawing from WCCA, which the way the Cowboy State data set, the decision was final, but they never reached out to the chairman to see if it was final. It would've never been voted on in a meeting. But if the one county does get out, we will lose our seat on Naco's executive board, Wyoming will, because you have to have all your counties in, involved to keep your national seat. So it's amazing what it does. And everybody was testifying, it was the clerks, the treasurers, Weeden, everybody, even L S O, whenever they need information, they just reach out to WCCA. And within minutes, that mysteriously appears in their email, the information they need. So the WCCA, the massive cleaning house for information across the state.
They reach out to all the bots.
Yeah.
They reach out to the courts association, they reach out to the treasurer association. WCCA keeps all of us on share.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, may I add something for that? I was the board member that didn't want to be part of the WCCA.
Oh, no.
No. Several years ago.
Several years, yeah.
I refused. I sat right here and said I didn't want to be a part, that it was not worth our time. It was not worth our money. Then guess what happened? I got every call under the sun. I was pretty, no way, still not interested. Then Thunder Basin Grassland happened. We had coordination meetings. There wasn't anything such as cooperating agency at that time. But we had coordination meetings and those federal people would not come to this courthouse and tell us what they're supposed to be doing by Flippma and by NIPA. That is a law, that is required for them to do that. As soon as we got WCCA involved, every one of them stepped into that courtroom. We developed with the WCCA a working group for the Prairie Dog. We, we developed a plan. We had months and months of, that were monitored and mitigated by, by the WCCA. So we were getting, we had no voice, we had nothing. That changed my mind. Because the power of the WCCA, you can call it whatever you want, but all of a sudden, Weston County, Wyoming had a voice on a federal level. We couldn't do it on our own. And you cannot do it, and also I, when one of the comments was made to me, you'll never get your estimating revenue. I sat down and said, well, I'll just do it myself because that's the stubborn redhead that I am. I got to, I, I got you. So I was one of those too.
There's a little behind the scenes stuff going on in this county. One, one, it's a three county commissioner, or three commissioner county. There's feeling one problem, some use support be on pulling out of W C L, support you on this land use agreement. Nothing, it's all behind the scenes stuff going on there. The executive board, every one of us members committed to calling that one commissioner was on defense to get him to stay in. And the reason they're attacking the WCCA is we are the strongest organization in Wyoming right now. A lot of these, I'll just call it B S bills, wasting time bills, they get killed. The WCCA rallies the troops and kills a lot of them bills that waste time and that group is a little upset. Their bills didn't all make it this year. So, and on the other side noted that, WAM got a new executive director, she's been on board for about nine months. She's a good one to go with. So hopefully the municipalities will start getting better voice to it.
Well, imagine.
They're attacking all the associations.
Well, imagine taking ninety-five commissioners and telling them, we got this one law, when this, when the Wyoming state constitution says it cannot fit only one county. You have to get them all in agreement.
Yeah, there was, it just, little exciting. There was one bill that came up that was a good bill that got voted down in a matter of several hours before they adjourned the evening. We got seventeen votes swing the other way. That's how strong the association is. Cheyenne, so. That's, anything else? Any other questions? Thank you.
Still have them.
Alright, well.
Remember tonight.
Talk to Jeremy then. Go for, do a lunch break and come back and visit about some budget stuff.
We need to, oh, take mail. An hour.
One thirty.